We're good. Okay, everybody, you're set?
I'm ready when you're ready.
All right, I guess we are ready to get started here. Welcome to the April 29th edition of the Medfield Select Board. The, for those who are joining us online, if you don't have access to the agenda and would like it or the meeting packet, if you go to the town website, click on Departments and then Select Board, scroll down to, one option is Agendas and Meeting Agendas. The other one is on Agenda Packets. So you can join us on Zoom if, I'm not sure how they would know, if they're not already connected. I've always wondered, how is it that they would know how to get onto this, to hear me tell them how to get onto it by Zoom? But anyway, you can use the Zoom link you'll find on our agenda online.
Medfield TV, live, you could be watching.
Medfield TV, yeah, they could be, maybe they want to join, and that makes it easier if you have comments or want to ask questions. Just a couple of points to everyone here in the room, be aware that this is, this meeting is being recorded. It's being livestreamed on Medfield TV, but it's also being recorded, so just, you know, act accordingly. And before we, before, and, oh, incidentally, one other point about that for anyone who's new here, there's a microphone over there and a microphone over here. When you, we're going to ask if you do want to speak, if you would identify who you are and your address for, just for identification purposes. And when you use the microphone, your voice will not be amplified. It's being used for the audio pickup for Medfield TV, so don't be alarmed if you don't feel like you're being amplified. You're not supposed to be, so speak clearly here in the room. And then before we get started, we'd just like to take a moment of appreciation for our service members serving around the globe to protect our country. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start off on a high note here. The first item that we have, Police Deputy Chief Barry McGrath to request appointment of Officer Robert Hayne to the position of Sergeant. Take it away, Barry.
Members of the board, when I was hired here, one of the jobs the chief tasked me with was recruitment. I was fortunate enough to have a mutual friend introduce me to Rob. My friend, who is actually here tonight, Deputy Chief Cassidy from the Rethan Police Department, told me a little bit about Rob, said that he worked for a local university, that he was extremely charismatic and looking for opportunities that Medfield offered, one being the K-9 handler specifically. So he also mentioned that, when I asked to describe him a little bit, he said he's charismatic and, you know, community oriented, and he kind of reminds them a little bit of a really tall Mr. Rogers. I was intrigued. I was intrigued. I called Rob right away.
Lots of sweaters.
I called Rob right away, and before we started the professional official application process, I met him for a cup of coffee and got an understanding of what he was looking for. Of course, he did want the K-9 handler position. He was also looking for community engagement and an opportunity to work hard and climb the, climb up the chain, get promoted. So I told him in all sincerity that Chief Garette was actually seeking out these types of candidates and would reward a person that came on here and actually engaged in the community and, and worked hard. Rob interviewed with the chief and I shortly after, and in November 2023, he was hired. And I have to say, less than two years later, I can say two things definitively. Rob came in here, he worked hard, and he has been rewarded for that hard work. And the second thing I will say is that he actually does remind me of a very tall Mr. Rogers, if he were a police officer. Rob is here tonight with his, his dad, Rob, also, and his wife Julie. Rob has recently obtained his master's degree in Security and Intelligence Studies with a concentration on home and security and emergency management. I had to actually write that down because the title was so long, it couldn't be something like Police Administration or CJ, no, you had to go big. Rob, in addition to his K-9 handler certification, is also a Crisis Intervention Training Officer, a TASER instructor, background investigator, sexual assault investigator, and CPR instructor. For all of these reasons and more, I would respectfully request the board to approve the appointment of Officer Hayne to the rank of Police Sergeant.
Oh, I'm, I'm thrilled. I got, you know, you know, it's, starting now, my second term, and I look out and I, there's all these new faces, and the department is just phenomenal, and to see Rob get this opportunity, earn this opportunity. You know, I see him around town all ti, around town all the time, so I'm thrilled and I absolutely support this. I'm, I'm beyond excited.
I too am very pleased, so congratulations. I also would just point out that we have an array of 10 officers here in this room. This is just a wonderful show of the department turning out for one of their own. And so thank you for what you guys have done in the department, chief, deputy chief, and officers.
I'm delighted for this recommendation as well, and I'm also delighted that this town, this department in particular, you started off by talking about the opportunities to, to grow and develop. And one of the things I think we as a town want to see and want to help promote and are delighted when we do see it is the opportunities that are there for people to be able to do that. So I think in this case, it's certainly coming and focuses on you, although I do have one question, did you bring Nova? Nova probably figured it was best to stay out of the limelight here. It would have just drawn attention away from you. I, I understand totally. But anyway, it's, it's a pleasure to see all of you here. It's, it's a delight to be able to, I assume, recommend unanimous approval for this promotion recommendation. We're glad to see all of you here, and I think as a town, we're working awfully hard to make sure you all have great opportunities to develop and, and progress, so.
I would move to appoint Officer Robert Hayne to the position of Sergeant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Members of the board, tonight, we're gonna have Rob's dad pin him, and I believe is Marion going to do the swearing?
Yeah, Marion's here, right?
Would it be possible if we had a picture of the board?
Absolutely.
Hold on, absolutely.
Wait, we want to roll.
You know something I never noticed until you just were being sworn in?
I look like Mr. Rogers?
No, you have a personalized, I never noticed the patch on the left side. With a picture of Nova on it. It's like, that's not really impressive. How many other specialized, I'm gonna start paying more attention now, but I see you guys up.
We actually do an autism patch, a rest, cancer awareness patch, and a veterans patch.
All right.
We get everybody in, everybody moving here.
I got your back.
Rob, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Congrats, very happy for you. Thank you. One more time.
Congratulations.
Oh, congratulations, so very welcome.
Congratulations to your son. You as well, thank you.
Well, I was about to say it's all downhill from here, but I'm sure that there are some highway intersection design aficionados here who have been waiting for this next discussion, which is the discussion of the intersection designs at the 50% Design Update. All yours.
Appreciate that. Hard act to follow, but we'll do, we'll do our best to bring a similar level.
Jeff, just making sure, we're in the 50% Design Folder?
Yeah, and, and that one, the, that PowerPoint there, perfect, that'd be great. If we need to pull up any of the detailed plans, that 50%.
It's in there, okay.
Perfect, that should happen.
So some equally exciting color graphics we'll pull up here for you. But no, Jeff Ketter, it's with VHB. It's good to see folks again here to, to give an update on the offsite intersection designs associated with the mitigation commitments under the Medfield State Hospital redevelopment. With us, we have Josh Triarkus and Matt Keely from VHB as well, and our design team, and Dan Moore and Abby Goldenfarb from the Trinity team. So hoping to just run through the, the presentation in front of you, just to give an update from when we last met in January, and happy to answer any questions, comments from there. Just want to start, this is the same key slide that we reviewed originally, just for a quick locus relation of the hospital site as well as the three intersection locations heading down Harding Street towards, towards the center of town. And we're just gonna jump right to, to the concepts from here. So moving out from our last discussion, we, we had decisions approved on the various concepts, so we've essentially taken that to what we're calling 50% Design. And this is vetting the horizontal, vertical layout of the intersections, signage and striping, grading to a level where suitable for local permitting. So we'd like to present that to you and, and talk through any questions. This is the Hospital Harding intersection from the concept selected of Hospital Road teeing into Harding Street. So the pavement areas are hatched. It shows a three-way stop at the intersection. The green hatches indicate areas of, of landscape, loam and seed in, in where the existing pavement is now. So there's additional landscaping beyond that, but the intent of showing that hatch is where we're tightening some of the existing edges of pavement at the intersection. I know one comment was discussed previously on the location of the stop bars and, and balancing the folks entering the intersections. We did look at that. I would say what we're prioritizing is site distance triangles and turning movements. So we, we wanted to get folks to be able to pull as close to the intersection as possible, but not impact conflicting turning movements to have, and have appropriate safety and site distance at each of the stops. The existing sidewalk wraps around the north corner. It's lightly shaded just beyond the hatched area there, but the intent is that sidewalk will remain and have a little bit of a landscape buffer as it comes around the, the new radius on the north corner. And just for reference, the, the thicker blue lines is the, the town right-of-way boundary. So all of this work is, is contained within the, the public right-of-way. Let me go to the next one.
Do you, how do you want a question? You want to?
Yeah, I guess however you'd like to proceed if you want to go.
I'm gonna suggest we do it that way.
Sure.
So maybe we can go back to that one for a second, I think we can start.
So I have a question, the bump out at the end of Hospital where it's now the easier to stand, it's loom and grass. Are you going to do something, whether it's stones or small curb, so people aren't cutting that corner?
Yes.
Because if I, looking at this intersection correctly, there, whereas the, well, every, you really have enough, and I'm okay with this next statement, just wanted to make sure I'm reading this right. There is no turn lane to the right, so everyone's going to come to a stop.
Correct.
So you're not gonna ever double up with cars. So that's why I want to make sure the end of Hospital Road doesn't allow for, is the potential for somebody trying to take a left and somebody cutting behind them to take a right. Because I'm, because you're not leaving that for Harding on either side.
Correct, correct, single lane only. And I, sorry, my eyes aren't that great. I know there is some curbing predominantly at the curves and, but then beyond that, we're, we're keeping the existing kind of flush edge of pavement to mimic that country drainage approach.
And I think for residents, if you can't see this well at home, even anyone here, what I'm seeing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, is basically the island that exists today is kind of where this is all taking place.
Correct.
So, so don't think that we're gonna try to put a stop sign where the current road stops. There's a lot of construction that's gonna go on here to bring the sight of, the line of sight out some, but to your point, not too far out, that it makes it dangerous for the, anyone taking the left and right.
Correct, correct.
To that point, that light gray sort, sort of an oval, that's, is that the current island?
Yes, yes, right about just north of that stop bar from Hospital Road.
It's actually, it's actually, that stop bar is right in the middle of the existing island.
Yes, yep, yep.
Did you say there's gonna be a curb?
At the, at the corners and at the intersection, yes, and then beyond that, it'll flare back to just flush edge of pavement, which is there now.
So this is a, an intersection that I drive every day because I live up to the left. And this is gonna so much improve that intersection because the people that head north on Harding, onto Hospital, or, well, onto Harding themselves, there's a very bad curve there. And the, the people headed north are constantly going over the center line, unfortunately, to make the turn. So this is gonna improve the safety a ton, so this is a great result.
I have one, one comment, not, I'm not, I'm at an intersection side, but I have one thing that I think we're gonna see. The way that stop bar coming off of Hospital is it's not perpendicular, you know, it's not a straight 90-degree. I would, and, and it's also set quite a ways down the road from the southbound on Harding. I would anticipate that people hit that because they're not hitting Harding at a straight 90-degree angle. Not saying move it, but the angle of it, instead of it being a direct 90-degree turn, that's a, you know, 85, 80-degree turn, which will, people will be inclined on that one because they're already partway through the turn. They'll be inclined to try to blow through that, not blow through the stop sign, but aggressively work through the stop sign before people coming south on, on Harding Street can do it. I'll say that as a driver, not as a, as an intersection designer. But the, the intersection that it reminds me of is if you ever go to Claver Tree, you're trying to get out to, out to, you know, the, like the train station on 128. There's an intersection there. They've added, they've made, it used to be a, a yield sign to the right to go through, to get to the train station. Now they've made it a stop sign, but the point is, it still is, it still is you're halfway across the turn before you stop. And so the car that might have the right-of-way is set back farther on the road. The inclination is gonna be for people to try to, I think, try to do that. I don't, yeah, I'm not gonna tell you how to do this. I'll make the observation that that, as I look at it, rather than having it be a straight 90-degree in the spot you want to put it, but a straight 90-degree, I anticipate people will be aggressive on that turn.
Got it. And yeah, we'll, we'll continue to refine this as far as the final documents and, and, and look at that, and we can certainly.
That's all.
Any questions from anybody else there?
Uh, yeah, anybody, absolutely. Any other questions? Yes, Christian, you gotta come up. The only thing is, you want to talk, you gotta come out of a microphone.
I just, I was just wondering, knowing a little bit how this works throughout the day, it's in the morning, there's school traffic from Fedora, Sherburne, coming from Sherburne. They take a lift here from Hospital Road and then go up Harding Street. And then we have commuting traffic that, from, you know, Millers and beyond, coming up Harding Street and continuing on Harding Street. I was just wondering if you have analyzed the impact on, you know, different traffic volumes throughout the day and what that means in terms of backup, you know, in any direction.
Thanks for the question, Matt Keely, Traffic Engineer from VHB. Typically, when we do traffic studies, we focus on the peak hours, so we're trying to capture when the, the baseline traffic for commuters and school traffic is gonna be at its peak with our development. So we focus on 7:00 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And we do that for existing conditions, future conditions without our project, and then future conditions with our project. And we did note that there was no significant additional delay associated with that.
Is there another, is there another, yeah. You can actually pull that right off the stand if you want.
Tracy Hogan, 20 Hospital Road. I'm just a little concerned that there's no continuation of a sidewalk. You end the sidewalk right before Surrey Way. Why can't a crosswalk be put there and then continue a sidewalk into town on the other side of the street? Because we've been on the north side of town without any way to access town other than a car since I've lived there and it's almost 30 years. So it, it's just getting really frustrating not being able to access town safely. You can't even do it on a bike safely because of the dangerous curve. So I mean, this would be an ideal time to mitigate that and start adding for a sidewalk.
So Jeff, Jeff, I'll just say, not put you in responsibility for explaining why we don't have sidewalks going to the center of town. The, the scope of this is work, it's actually MassWorks-funded work that's associated with modifying the intersections that are likely to be affected with the state hospital development project. So you're, you, I think the bigger part of your request there is that you're asking not just for a sidewalk around this intersection, but you're actually asking for a sidewalk all the way down Harding Street.
Or at least make, make it so it can happen in the future, not necessarily maybe right now, but at least have the areas lined up so it can happen in the future.
And maybe I can, I suppose, would, what I can say is we're not prohibiting, we're not eliminating any of the existing connection, that, that will remain along the north side, and, um, as far as the limits of existing pavement, we're, we're not doing anything to encroach outside of that, that would prohibit the ability to do that in the future, if that, that addresses-
Well, what I mean is, where the sidewalk ends now, to make a crosswalk there, cross it over to the other side of the street where it's a straight line into town, and make room for a sidewalk there, not, you know, at, at least in the future.
Are you talking about a crosswalk at the stop line?
Well, you could really do a crosswalk at the stop line the way you have it designed right now, it would have, and the sidewalk curves around and kind of ends right before that intersection with Surrey, so you can make a crosswalk there, um, but the way you have it designed right now, there is really no area for a crosswalk.
I guess what's encouraging to me, Tracy, is that the right-of-way, the blue lines show that there actually is room on the east side, uh, for a sidewalk there, when you look up to the north of Harding, the, the right-of-way gets very limited, and there isn't really town-owned land for the sidewalk, so that makes it more complicated for the town to put a sidewalk there, but I, the, the plan, I think, is for the sidewalk to go down Copperwood, out Ice House to, uh, West Mill, and then down Dale Street to the town, to get you to the downtown. That's less expensive than doing it down Harding, is my guess, I like it better going down Harding myself, 'cause I think that's the way that people would use it, I think the people from Evergreen and, and from Marlin are much more likely to go down Harding than to go over to Dale to get to the downtown.
Yeah, but with all due respect, I mean, that, I sent a letter back in twenty fifteen about this, and that's the same answer I got, and that was ten years ago, and nothing has been prog- uh, there's been no progress in trying to get a si- a sidewalk going in that direction also, and you're putting a three hundred and fifty unit development up, and there's no sidewalk to town, and there's no other way other to get back and forth than with a car safely, and you have children using the fields, coming from town, using the athletic fields, it would just make so much sense to have a sidewalk put in going to the north.
I, I agree with you, and, and the issue is how much do you wanna increase your taxes to pay for that sidewalk? I mean, our taxes in town are so high already that it's very hard to, to spring money loose to pay for sidewalks, but we, I, I think that we need them.
Well, I mean, it, it, it just gets frustrating, 'cause I see there was money to change the color of all the street signs in town, but there's not money for a sidewalk, you know, it's just things that benefit the actual citizens, I think, really should be prioritized.
I just want to comment about the location of a sidewalk, the thing I would be, if I understood what you're saying, you're saying a si- a crosswalk, just a little bit, I guess, down from Surrey, but not all the way down to the stop line?
Well, you see where the, the, the gray area ends?
On the way up Harding?
That's where the, yeah, that's where the sidewalk ends, so, I mean, you could just cross it over, the crosswalk there, and then have people-
I, I think that would actually be a dangerous thing to do, 'cause then people would think they have a, 'cause what, what you're doing is you're putting a crosswalk in a travel lane, not at a stop line, so people would say, oh, I got a crosswalk, people have to stop for me, and they would walk out there, and, and there's also a curb before you get here anyway, when you're coming southbound, I, I actually think that would be dangerous to do, because you're crossing the street in the middle of the travel lane, not at one of the intersections.
So then this needs to be redesigned, so there's a crosswalk available, 'cause how people would use it?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if there were any crosswalk there, it would be at the stop line.
Correct.
So the fact that the sidewalk ends where it ends, we don't have a crosswalk there now, what people do is they walk on the side, on the shoulder, you go down, you'd have to go down to the stop line and then use the crosswalk there, which is basically what people do right now, except they try to figure out one to cross when there's not traffic coming one way or the other.
Well, there's not, there's no crosswalk there, and it's up, so we could put a crosswalk in, that would be helpful, if there's a crosswalk that's safe in that area.
And maybe if, if I could offer, and I think similar, I know we had this discussion regarding the roundabout before, and, and we do have a slide getting there, but what we could do is, in a similar fashion, um, for here, indicate, you know, we, we can, we can sketch what, um, uh, potential future sidewalks and crossings would look like in relation to this design, and to Gus's point, it, it would, sorry, I'm gonna try to use this, this laser pointer, see if this works, uh, not on the screen, sorry. Almost there, um, it's, it, it would, it would, it would modify the stop bar locations and, and push those back to Gus's point, but what we could do is include a similar figure that we have here for the roundabout, just, just to indicate that there is the ability to accommodate that, if, um, if that helps facilitate ongoing discussion.
And where I was going with it was even though there's no sidewalk, if you had a crosswalk, which is just a paint issue, not a construction issue, if there was one there, it should be where the stops, where the stop lines are now, uh, so to the point, if, well, I guess what I'm saying, Tracy, is I don't see us building sidewalks from the center of town to here in the next couple of years, because of other places where it's heavier traffic, for heavier pedestrian traffic, and that's where the priority is, they're working from the center out, but if painting a crosswalk would improve not having any crosswalk there at all, even if the, if the sidewalks, if, if you're saying that would be better than not, you know, than not doing anything, that, that would be, I think, an easy, relatively easy thing to incorporate.
Uh, there's a little bit of a ripple effect that, as soon as you're adding it, now you need, you want safe refuge and, um, and at a minimum on either side of it.
Okay, so you can't just put something hanging out there?
Not without, uh, kind of a safe place for someone to get to and arrive at on either side, um, so there would be some additional component there, but we could, we could certainly at least frame it that, that could be accommodated, um, at some point down the road.
Okay.
Can I make two more points? Christian on ninety-two Green Street, Gus, I think you said that this design is to, in, in regards to the impact of the hospital development, but that seems to have the underlying assumption that there are no pedestrians at the hospital development, or no impact on pedestrians, just drivers, I don't think that's a good, uh, basis to start this design, but I'm-
I also wanna, you know, point out that there is, this is an intersection here, and there is technically, legally, because there's a sidewalk over here, I believe there's a sidewalk going into-
On the, on the west side of Clayton.
On this side?
Yeah.
Okay, so legally, there is a crosswalk, it's called an unmarked crosswalk, uh, the law treats it the same as a marked crosswalk, uh, I'm not saying that it's safe, but I'm saying, I mean, this is, that would be a natural place to put it.
With traffic lights like we have at the rail trail, um, and, uh, and of course, another stop line that would also be there, so I'm, I don't think that, that it has to be, you know, right in the intersection where it would be more difficult to implement, I think, from, you know, traffic flow mitigation aspect, I'm, and, and it could just go down to the rail trail frankly, because from there, you can go on the rail trail, to Ice House, and then connect to, um, to, um, what is it, Adam Street, and then, um, and then get downtown, you know, that way, in, in a somewhat safer way.
So I, first off, Christian, I think the idea, you know, you sold me on the crosswalks at the rail trail, initially, I was against it, but that was 'cause I was thinking of something a little different than what you really had, and I think that works pretty well at the rail trail, so I would, I, I wouldn't personally rule out that being a solution the town would look at if there was, if, if it was enough pedestrian traffic by the Copperwood, Hospital Road cross to justify that kind of flashing thing, I think, in fairness, I don't think it's part of this intersection redesign that we're dealing with, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a valid observation about something the town could do to make pedestrian traffic safer, but what I'm trying to do here is not have the scope of discussion for you guys go beyond what the intentions were, uh, but that's not to negate, I'm not trying to dismiss your idea, I'm just saying I think that's-
My point is, Gus, if there are three hundred and seventy units or whatever, the-
Three hundred and thirty-four.
The leader's saying, there will be five hundred residents, lots of children, I'm just saying that the need for, uh, you know, sidewalks is going to be impacted by this project, and we can't just pretend that it's, you know, it's gonna be like it is today.
Christian, what you mentioned that intrigued me, that I hadn't thought of before, was using the, uh, link of the rail trail from Harding over to Ice House as a way to get people over towards Dale Street, so that if we had a connector from this intersection here, where there is a sidewalk coming down Hospital, and we put a, a sidewalk from there down to the, the rail trail, then we could get people over to Ice House, and then we just have that small section from Ice House to Dale to get them to the downtown on a, well, we don't have a sidewalk on Dale yet.
There is also, I mean, we, there is also the trail connection that goes down Hart, the, the McCarthy Fields and through that little wooded area, so, but that would have to be improved, because right now it's often wet and really not passable during, during the wet season, so, um, that is also an alternative, you know, to get people from the hospital development who want to walk or ride bikes.
And that doesn't help the people on Colonial that much.
No, it won't.
Well, the people on Colonial can take the rail trail, I mean, you know?
Yep.
Even though some people think the rail trail closes at dusk, but it's, uh, it does not.
Doesn't close, that's for that very reason, because it is only for connection, I mean, around town for pedestrians and pedestrians.
All right, let's go to the next question.
Okay, next, uh, Harding and West Street, um, so in this diagram, um, this is moving southeast towards the town center, uh, the planned north edge of pavement will essentially remain intact, and, um, what this is proposing is teeing up West Street as you're coming down the hill there, uh, trying to square that off a little more into Harding Street, and, uh, the green kind of triangle area is what is new landscape area created, um, by pushing the roadway edge north essentially, um, to channelize Harding Street a little straight through, um-
Jeff, can you hold on one second?
Oh, yep, sure.
I'm just gonna exit and see if I can zoom in, uh... Is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Sorry about that.
No, no, perfect. Uh, so West Street comes to, uh, to a one-way stop sign, uh, through traffic on Harding Street, East and West, uh, you can see two little spurs off the south side, that are some, um, minor extensions of the existing driveways to pull those out to the, um, to the edge of the new roadways, uh, there's some limited drainage improvements that'll be incorporated as part of this, just in moving the curb line north, um, uh, tying into the existing drainage system, I can all see we have some wetland resource areas off the north edge of the site, so majority of this work occurs within the hundred-foot buffer zone, and, um, will be part of the notice of intent, um, I guess after this process, our, our next step is, um, is submitting a notice of intent to Conservation Commission to review, uh, the work in the buffer zone that this will be part of.
I just wanted to go to not just make it easy, all right, so today, when I heard you say, Jeff, is this is where West Street, kind of, people stop today?
Correct.
And they look over the shoulder, you're gonna fill that in with grass and seed and pull the road more so you have more of a ninety-degree turn?
Exactly, yep.
And then, so we're not really impacting this property very much at all, and then, uh, putting a little bit of seed in there?
Correct, and, and that's all still Town's right-of-way, it, the, the town owns a decent amount of that corner there, um, yeah, correct.
Town right-of-way, but over there?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
But yes, that, that existing edge of pavement along the inside edge is, is relatively consistent, um, will stay relatively consistent.
So if the Town right-of-way is that large, did you look at moving it out to being more of a T-intersection?
We did, the, the issue was the grading, uh-
Too steep?
Yeah, yeah, um, pretty, pretty significant elevation change between the two, unfortunately.
Okay.
And you are keeping it, like, I, so I, I'm very familiar in the morning coming up around that bend, and people taking a left to cut up West Street, cut through Town, you're, you're, that'll still may, be maintained as a single-lane road.
Correct.
So the only thing that's concerning me is, we're also now, the next picture's gonna be the roundabout, so is there any chance, I know Matt, this would fall in your bucket, of the, the traffic flow, um, uh, especially at night when people are coming off of north, and you can't go around a car there, so is there a chance you're creating a large gridlock with all those people that may go and take a left, then you have people coming from Harding that's still the right-of-way? There can be a little bit of gridlock here during peak travel times.
And the shoulder width? Four? Three?
Three.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, it, people going northwest on Harding that are turning left onto West, I think there would be room for people to slowly sneak by if they, if they really want to, um, but we're, we're sort of not really changing the existing condition that much, and one thing we do wanna do is, I mean, the way it is right now, if you're coming on Harding, you can kind of take that soft left at speed, which is pretty dangerous, uh, conflicting with Harding coming in the other direction, um, if people wanna try and scoot onto West Street, it's, it's just a softer left turn movement, they don't actually have to come up.
But would it be a little different with that, is today, a car would be right about here?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And now that car to take the left is up here, I think it narrows more, like, I don't, I don't have to, I'll check tomorrow morning, but that, my only concern is that might narrow the play, I don't know if you have the ability, today you can-
Yep.
Go around somebody slow, you're not going down, you're not going at, at speed, but if somebody's trying to take that left, you can at least go around them, um-
You, you can't go around people much there, 'cause it drops off pretty steeply on the, on the north side.
The further you go down, yeah, the, today you can, but the further you go down, it's, I'm not sure it's gonna be as, as easy to do, and the only reason I'm concerned about that to a little bit is, is that when people are coming out, off the roundabout, and they are coming up North Street to take West, and I, like, we saw it that night, we stood up, right, there are a lot of people that do that.
Yep.
So now, if it backs up and you can't take the left, you're actually making a gridlock where people going in, getting into the roundabout are not going to be able to exit as smoothly as potentially today it is, I mean, just food for thought, I'm not just-
Yep, no, yeah, I, I, and I don't think the queue would extend back that far, but we should, we will just take another closer look at the width there, just to, to make sure that that's possible.
So what occurred to me at that spot was that the people turning left off of Harding onto West Street are gonna be cutting that corner maybe, where the cars are trying to stop on West Street for the, to come out onto Harding, and that was the concern that I wrote down to myself, but you guys are okay with the way it's gonna work?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think with the slight angle still remaining there, and sort of the, you know, the left turn's happening in the evening, more the right turn's happening in the, in the morning, um, we don't think there's gonna be that significant of a conflict there.
Okay.
Uh, but again, we'll, we'll take a look at that width, just to, to see if there's anything we can do to improve that.
Yeah, and, and most people don't take a right from Harding onto West, so that's a good, no, the West, that's a hard, that's a really hard right.
Yeah, I'm talking about the wreck, yep.
Although, although you've made it easier than it is right now, so in, in fact, actually, that lane by having a wide open mouth there, uh, it's, it's an easier target to get your car through, uh, 'cause it's a little more, it just feels like it's a little bit easier for people to ne- maneuver there, so. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, next.
Okay. Save the best for last here, um, okay, so this is, uh, this is Harding and North, and this is the proposed roundabout concept, so again, just for context, the, the thick blue lines and the outer extents are the public right-of-way, limits of the public right-of-way, um, the kind of black dash line with, with dots on the right side is the wetland resource area, and you can kind of see some offset lines from there, there's a fifty-foot and a hundred-foot buffer zone that's associated there, the hundred-foot buffer runs right through the middle of the roundabout, um, so again, this will be part of the, uh, notice of intent package to submit to Conservation to review that work, but, um, similar with the other graphics, the, the outer extents of the green hatch signify the, uh, location of the existing edge of pavement, so, uh, for the most part, it's pretty consistent, but some slight areas where we are pulling in along the southeast, southwest corner of the intersection, a little bit along the northwest, uh, we are bumping out the eastern edge, uh, kind of with a, the heart of the circle there, just to accommodate the radius, uh, and the intent is here for, uh, the gray is the bituminous asphalt, the islands in the middle, the splitter islands, um, are proposed as, as concrete, so a different material. The islands in the middle, the splitter islands, um, are proposed as, as concrete, so a different material. Granite curbing in there to, um, to set these lanes and, and establish, uh, establish the travel lanes. Uh, the center island, there's, there's kind of two rings we can talk to in the middle. The first is our kind of truck apron, so what that has is a, a mountable curb between the gray asphalt and the, the yellow kind of gridded hatch that, you know, normal standard traffic vehicles are intended to stay on the gray asphalt, but that apron is provided for larger buses, um, trucks, uh, if needed to, uh, to drive over that, that mounted truck apron and make some turning maneuvers. Between the truck, the yellow truck apron and the green landscape, there's a, another vertical curb, and that center island would, would be all loam and seed and landscaped. Uh, just a couple kind of points here, there's an existing hydrant in the middle of the, the triangle island now. That's being proposed to, to relocate to the northwest corner, um, along the edge of the road, but just outside the roundabout. And, uh, we'll continue to work through that with DPW and the Fire Department. Uh, there's also an existing utility pole that's going to be relocated, um, just kind of the southwest portion of the center landscape island. And the reason, the main reason for that, we looked at a couple options here and, and predominantly, um, we had a chance to, to look, getting back to our sidewalk discussion, we looked at making sure we weren't doing anything to prohibit the ability for sidewalks to be implemented at some point down the road. And, um, the location of the center island there was set with that respect. So, it, it did shift it a little northeast from the original concept we looked at.
Thank you.
To make sure that we weren't, um, kind of that southwest corner was the pinch point that would, that would have prohibited making a sidewalk connection in the future. Um, and Frank, maybe if we can go to the next slide, i- in that context, so the red, the red diagrams here outline what that, what that could be, and just to make sure we were, we weren't doing anything to prohibit that down the line. So, this would, this would be crossings at the three locations in red and connections to the, uh, adjacent sidewalk on the east and new sidewalks along the outside. Again, not part of this scope, but we just wanted to include this graphic, um, just to make sure we, we weren't doing anything to prohibit it.
In your point earlier, you wouldn't just put, given that we do have a sidewalk on the east side, you wouldn't just put the crosswalks in because you don't have the established crosswalks on the others, the other end of the...
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm, I want, I support this, but I, my visual right now that concerns me a smidge is, in today's world, you're coming down Har, uh, north and, and, and where does it is, you know, going on a hard and has right-of-way, right? So, somebody coming, they keep going this way as freely as they want. Now, when they have a roundabout, somebody coming here gets into the roundabout and by law has the right-of-way. As we stood at this corner back in August, we know people here at night are just humming this way. I almost sense that people are just going to ease into this, and this is why I was saying, uh, to Jeff and Matt, this is where my concern is that we could get some gridlock by a fellow born bridge where people are, are inching in, claiming their right-of-way, even though they should not come in this, this circle unless this is open. Um, this, this during peak times could become a little bit of a mini gridlock in Medfield extended from what we're used to. Today, we're used to seeing the traffic go that way. I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned, 'cause this is pretty short, like, I think West Street is right about here. So, the moment this backs up here, it feeds into this and it feeds into the flow. So, just food for thought, I'm not feeling that.
Yes.
During the middle of the day, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but I think it's the peak times where people are taking off in the morning to avoid going through town and then coming back at night.
If I could just make one point on that, with, with the design of what we call modern, modern roundabouts as opposed to a rotary, which is a lot more pavement, a lot, um, more dull angles, roundabouts are pretty tight. Um, so you don't tend to see the behavior of people creeping into a roundabout, because once you cross that line, you're in it. Um, so, people do tend to respect the yield line on roundabouts because of the, the tighter geometry.
Okay.
So, I wanna thank you for moving the thing over to the northeast and creating that southwest possibility for a future sidewalk there, 'cause that had been my concern before, and so I appreciate that that's saved. Look at this, I compare it to the, the, the roundabout that I'm used to is the, that I like is the one at the, on, uh, one thirty-five in, in, uh, Wellesley at the bottom of the hill where Wellesley Avenue goes over by Babson and Wellesley Country Club. And Wellesley, it was pretty small inters, roundabout already, and they made it smaller and tighter, and they, they make me come in now at more of a right angle. So, when I was looking at this configuration, what dawned on me was that the people coming up North Street headed north, because it, it's not coming in at, at a right angle, that they might enter the, they might try to enter it too fast. Like, that one over in Wellesley, what they make you do is turn a little bit to the left before, when you get to the roundabout part, to make sure you're only going fifteen miles an hour, what, so...
I think we can, we can certainly continue to refine that.
I'm dangerous because I started to think about traffic engineering and I know nothing about it, so...
Nope, absolutely valid point, I, I think ultimately it's a matter of balancing that with, um, with being able to accommodate the vehicular turns and movements of the fire trucks and buses, but we can certainly, we can continue to, um...
I don't think about them, so that's why I'm dangerous.
Uh, but we'll, we'll certainly, as we finalize it, um...
Okay, thank you.
To, to that, that point, I think, we, I think last time we talked, that northwest turn has, is a sharper turn than the current. People just kind of drift through, and I think the current may be the, one of those gray line, I'm not sure which gray line, but the last time we looked at it, it was real easy to see that you had moved it to where even, even though it's, you know, it's, it's a small angle there, that there is in fact more, maybe than a left turn, but there actually is a sharper turn to negotiate that.
Yes.
To come down north and then get onto Harding. So, it may not, it may not be everything that would really slow people down, but it's gonna slow them down.
A, a little bit, yeah, correct.
It's tighter than it is now. Uh, I don't, I don't think I had any questions, yes, from the...
Could I just mention while Jeff's coming up, in, in your, in your written materials, there's, uh, you've got all the names of the town employees wrong, so if, whoever drafted that...
Sure, it, uh, they actually had written reports in there that they can't change. The reports that, when they were filed, had former DPW employees' names on them, I believe.
Oh, all right.
That's what we had discussed.
Camphini and all that.
Yeah, yeah. I think there were, there were former reports that you were referencing.
Wow.
Yeah.
We've been thinking about that. Wow, okay. You must really be familiar with these intersections.
Always not offended at all.
Jeff, I'm in Metacomet Street, just two questions, um, or maybe a question and a comment. What is the speed limit that we would put entering? My question relates to all, all, all of this stuff. Is there a special speed limit for the roundabout as opposed to the other intersections, and what are they?
Hi, um, Josh Fiarcas from VHB. Um, so the roundabout itself, the curve, so not to get too into the details of the roundabout geometry design, but the way the roads come in, actually, if you zoom out a little bit, there's a little bit of an S-curve created in North Street. Um, the geometry of those is meant to slow drivers down, and then the, the circle itself, and then those curves entering, it's designed for a twenty mile an hour.
Twenty.
Typically for a roundabout.
Okay, thank you. The other comment, uh, or question is, I'm, I'm thinking about ongoing maintenance of the green areas. Not a super safe, where do, where do our town employees park? How, what are we putting there? We're talking about, mentioned loam and seed, you know, A, does it, and I'm a pretty green person, does it have to be something live and living, that's fine, but if it is, what's out there that's lower maintenance? Something that can just grow for a long time and can be, if it's grass, it's getting cut once a week. And in all these areas, you know, it's, it's a safety concern, right? It's a logistics concern, you've got people driving through, and then you've got town employees having to cut grass, mow around. So, I'm just suggesting that we think about some other kind of species of, of plant material that's gonna be low maintenance.
The, the island that's there now is maintained by the garden club.
I was, I was just gonna say that the garden club would like to heavily weigh in on what's, uh, in here.
Okay, just where's some high visibility?
We need that information verified, like, what it is, or we can just say it's, uh...
It would, it would help, but I, I think, I think if we can, I think primarily that it, it's, it's gonna be a vegetated area, what that specific species or, or material is, I think that can get finalized as part of the...
Where are, a concept to what it is, how to be in style for our performance?
Uh, it's me again, Christian Donner, ninety-two Green Street. I have another question. This is, this intersection is, um, I would, well, I mean, there is a very highly frequented bicycle route that goes through Dover Farm Street and then down...
Down here to Pine Street, and then people turn on Pine Street, go back into Dover. I'm just wondering what the, what the, um, what's the width of this? I mean, right now, cyclists, they just sneak through here, they, they are, because this is so wide, people can pass them easily in the intersection even. Um, this seems like there's more room for confrontation, and, and that's not good. I'm just wondering if there would be a possibility to create a little bypass, bike lane here so that cyclists can get through, you know, can avoid the, the, the rotary, you know what I mean? That's all, that's what I wanted to contribute, thank you.
Got it, um, yeah, this is, what's shown is certainly a share-the-road, uh, approach, intended to, to kind of narrow down the vehicle traffic as, as much as possible, um...
The, the cars would have to wait for the bicycles in this design.
Correct, correct.
It is a very heavily traveled bike route, coming down Harding and then down north.
Okay.
Into the, towards the downtown.
Well, you can't mass challenge you, is it, right? I mean, at least every artist...
But I, but I'm, I'm not sure that you, we're chasing our tail, because the people, when we had the last discussion, people that lived there were complaining about the fact that it's such an expedited intersection that cars were running up on the grass. And so, what we now got is something that's gonna slow the cars down. Quite frankly, bicyclists going through the roundabout are gonna, are gonna serve to slow the cars down as well. Uh, so, it's like, well, if we're now trying to expedite things for bikes by adding more things that, it almost sounds like people would have to be off the road on a bike cut-through on the roundabout. Uh, and if they wanted to go up North Street, that wouldn't do them any good anyway. Uh, I, I think you kind of have to decide what it is we want, and it seems to me for the people that live there, what they wanted was something that would calm the traffic. And in that context, in a roundabout, I don't think any cars are gonna be so rabidly anxious to pass a bicyclist that a car inside the roundabout is gonna be a problem. Well, farther up on, on Harding Street, when there's the, the roads, the, the road comes down to the Hospital Road where you wind up behind bikes and it's a windy road and it's dangerous to pass them, I've seen cars don't wanna take time to do that, but that's a fairly long stretch of road. I don't see this as being, uh, a spot that's gonna be a major point of confrontation, 'cause it's over in ten seconds.
Oh, you're in the sidewalk there.
Rob Tatro, twelve West Street. I don't know, just with all three of these intersections, I think there's going to be a period of driver education and bicyclist education that has to happen, just going through these intersections for a period of months. And maybe that means there's, you know, elevated, um, presence from the police force just to help remind drivers and, and bicyclists what they need to do in all these intersections, 'cause they're, they're gonna be brand-new, but, you know, I'm a bicycle commuter, I come from twelve West Street, and I go to Needham from there, so I have to cross Harding to get to North Street. It's the most dangerous part of my commute every day to Needham, is that intersection. So, I will gladly go around the inner, gladly go around the, uh, the roundabout and add a half a minute to my time rather than have to go across that intersection. So, uh, I just think that, knowing that when you're in the roundabout, that you've got the right-of-way amongst the traffic cutting in. And, you know, are there going to be confrontations at the beginning? Probably, but I think it's going to be, uh, driver education and bicyclist education that's really going to have to happen in order for that to, to be, you know, working the way that it's designed, 'cause I think it looks great.
Hi, Renee Howley, three Harding. I'm sorry I'm late, I hadn't had in my head that this started at seven, I'm like, I'm right on time. So, um, I just have one, 'cause I'm right here, so my, and I apologize if this has already been talked about. Um, our one comment, question on this was, it seems like the crosswalks are very close to the roundabout. So, our concern is like, as we step out and we start crossing, you're now blocking up the roundabout and the cars aren't gonna... So, can I come over for a minute?
So, our thought was, you know, cars come here and we're crossing, you get a couple cars backed up, and then the cars that wanna go straight then can't get around. Like, in my head, this crosswalk should be further down towards my house, I guess.
It's the red lines.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like it's too close to the circle.
And those are only proposed, right? Like, that's just so you're building it in so we can do it in the future, but it's not something you're doing right now.
Correct, that, those are not included, that, that is just to, to indicate where they could go at some point down the road.
But then I have a huge issue with it.
The piece, the piece that you missed was that if you're gonna put a crosswalk in, you actually have to have the, the areas of refuge, you can't just say, hey, here's a crosswalk, get you across the road, figure it out when you get to the shoulder, you gotta actually have the sidewalks there so that people know, and then they're on the sidewalk.
Okay, so my husband and I have a huge issue with this then, because that, we talked about this the last time we were here, that pedestrian safety was our most critical aspect of this. So, to add this roundabout and not having safe crossing spaces for us, to me adds just a, a, so many more layers of danger to what we're gonna have to deal with. 'Cause now every time we're crossing somewhere, we're not only crossing with the people on that road, we're, like, when we have to get across, we're dealing with everybody else to go every direction. For us, it's just the one people, set of people going, 'cause typically what we do, what everyone does is they walk down here, then we cross down here, or there's a straight towards Winter Street. So, now, you've got everybody going the same, like, there's no stop sign there, they're not...
It'd be one-lane, it's, right now, when you do it, you're actually dealing with traffic in two directions when you're crossing.
Right, but they're heading towards a stop and a yield, so they, they're slowing, they're naturally slowing down. Uh, we were promised pedestrian, like, we were promised crosswalks at the first meeting. Crosswalks were, was what we discussed at the last meeting.
So, the thing that does...
They were part of those original proposals that we were gonna have crosswalks.
No, 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 so, so the, we've talked about what we would like to see, but the, if, see what the red dotted lines are up there, where the crosswalks are, whether you see the red lines? That would be the proposed sidewalks, but that's not part of this project. And it's just not the funding that Trinity got to, to improve intersections.
I know the sidewalks aren't.
And, and this, and the crosswalks, what they just advised us is, if you create a crosswalk and you don't have a safe landing on either side, you've created an even more dangerous situation. Imagine somebody, like, I live on Metacomet, and the Metacomet going into the high school, there's a little bump so that if somebody's blind, somebody's, there's, there's markers so that you have a, a safe landing on both sides of that crosswalk. Since there are no sidewalks right now, you have no safe landing on either side of the street. So, you're creating a false sense of safety. I understand what you're saying in terms of...
So, pedestrian safety doesn't matter.
Well, it's not that it doesn't matter, it's just that, well, they're state laws, like, we can't choose to do things and break the law, so we're trying to follow best we can. Today, there are no crosswalks in that whole area, right?
Correct, but there's also not a roundabout.
And, and so, and so what we're trying to get at is with the roundabout, you will have, just from listening to Jeff, a slower approach, 'cause now you're, you're not humming right along North Street. You have to slow down coming into the roundabout as you come north onto North. I don't disagree that there's a concern that what's going to force a car to stop. And what you just said is, if you're crossing north, at least the cars coming on, on North towards the center of town are forced to stop at one point. That's technically not going to happen, there's going to be a merge into...
Right.
The, the roundabouts.
So, without crosswalks, pedestrians don't have the right-of-way, the cars do. So, what happens the first time someone gets hit? I mean, there's two schools within walking distance to this, this area.
But how, what I don't understand is how is that, this worse than what you have right now?
'Cause today we have a stop sign and a yield sign, so it's naturally causing cars to slow down, uh, coming onto Nor, coming onto Harding.
The yield, I don't, I don't, I think the yield sign doesn't do anything more to slow a car down than this roundabout will.
Just to clarify, each, each approach here is, is yield, yield stripe and signed, each, each approach to this circle.
You're, you're also, like, so today, today if we wanna cross, like, so here, you know, try to get across here, I don't even know where I would cross in this mess, honestly, but, like...
honestly. But, like, these people going straight are over here, now they have to come over here to go this way. So I'm not just dealing with the cars going up Harding, every, I now have to contend with cars that are going up Harding and up North. Whereas, right now, I don't have to contend with the cars going up North, 'cause they're coming up with a stop sign. So in this model, I'm contending with cars going on Harding and North. That's our concern. We're now gonna be dealing with double the amount of cars to, to cross them.
I think what's gonna make your life much better is that on the south side of the street, that there's actually a sufficient shoulder that one can walk there. Now, when you try to walk on that shoulder at the Harding-North curve, there's, there's no sightline, and when you meet a pedestrian at that spot, it's very dangerous, 'cause you come across, upon them with very little time to react, and, and there's no room to go around them, 'cause they're in the, 'cause it goes up, and they, so they walk in the street.
Yeah, and as someone who lives there-
There's gonna be, there's gonna be more space now, 'cause this has gotten moved over, so there'll be a little bit more berm area.
I don't know if anyone in my little area is here tonight. You're up on West, though.
I must have heard of West.
There are three of us, there were four of us here at the first meeting, and every single one of us voiced that our biggest concern with any of these designs was pedestrian safety. And so we were very excited when we saw these crosswalks on this line, this drawing, without understanding they were proposed and not real.
I remember this conversation from last time, and I think the way it was left was that we said that the sidewalks were not part of the scope of our project. Um, we would accommodate the design to allow for future sidewalks, which we've noted on these designs, but that would address your concerns. But again, the sidewalk, we can't put crosswalks without putting sidewalks. And the sidewalks are not part of what we've been funded for, they're not what was voted on and approved, so we have allowed for the design to change, so that should there be funding available at a future point in time, and the town votes on it, it can be accommodated.
You talked about crosswalks last time, and it was not stated that you had to have sidewalks to have crosswalks at that time.
Well, I, I, I didn't go back and listen, I'm not, I don't know.
Yes, you're, you're correct in saying, we, we can't, we can't introduce a spot for somebody to cross without, without safe landings and refuge out of the vehicular ways.
So to, to, what I, what I'm having a hard time grasping, I'm just not getting your point, but it's not, 'cause I'm disagreeing, I, I just don't think I understand it. When I walk there, and I, and I've come down Harding to get into the center of town, and I have to cross North Street, I will walk all the way up North Street until I'm satisfied that the cars coming north on North Street have plenty of sightline to know that I'm crossing the street, which would put me probably beyond the island that's there, more, more like probably where the island comes to a point. So I don't cross the street until I'm in a spot where, even if they can't see me, I can see them coming. I see this as a safer, even without the crosswalks, and I'm not saying never crosswalks, but even without the crosswalks, the fact that I can get across, say, North Street, by dealing with just one lane to get to the island, and then the other lane to get the rest of the way across the street, is a safer crossing for me than having to sit there and check both lanes and make sure I can clear both lanes because of the way it's set up now.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm not talking about the crossing. So we walk here, we do the same thing. We walk here, and we get way up here before we cross. But when we walk here, we're only dealing with this yield. In this model, we're not only dealing with the people who are turning onto Harding, we'll also be dealing with the traffic of the people going straight. So just to get around this corner, we will have twice as many cars we're dealing with. That's my concern. And actually, three times as many, right? Because now we're also dealing with the people that are coming around to come up Harding.
But you're not getting into the traffic flow there. You're, are you just talking about the shoulder? You know?
Yeah, well, we walk, we walk here.
So the green part is actually added space for you to be walking from what you have right now?
Yes, I, I understand.
I think, I think your best solution actually is to come out of your driveway and cross Harding, and then get to the shoulder on, on the south side, 'cause there's gonna be a lot more walking space on that side of the road going forward.
To go into town, I agree, but to go, we go to walk over Winter Street and all those neighborhoods over there. That's how a lot of our neighborhood walks.
Then you could get down to, below the roundabout and cross over to, to, to go up north on, on, to Winter Street, I guess.
We're not getting crosswalks, apparently. I just wanted to make sure my, our concerns were voiced, the same concerns we had last time, that not having crosswalks, I think, is a very dangerous proposition here. With two schools. Remember, there are two schools within walking distance. We bought our house 'cause there were two schools within walking distance, and we cannot walk to either one of them safely.
I gotta ask one more question about, I heard you say twenty, it's designed for twenty miles an hour, and I, I thought that we were trying to get people down to fifteen miles an hour. As I say, I just play a traffic engineer.
You might go through the light if you ask that question, if you're hungry.
Again, as Jeff mentioned earlier, we can look to see what we can do to try to shrink the circle, but again, the smaller we make the circle, the slower it goes down. Now, we're seeing, we just have a hard time taking those, so it's trying to balance the large vehicles with the slower traffic, which is how we're looking at it.
If I were doing it, I'm making the decisions, I'd tilt towards the slower circle.
Uh, other questions from the audience? Right. What else do you have?
Um, that, yeah, that's, that's it. So I, maybe next steps, as Abby mentioned, we mentioned four, what, what we'd like to do is, is move forward to file notice of intent with the conservation commission to review the West-Harding and Harding-North intersections for the work within the proposed buffer zone. That's kinda next, next steps for us, that we seek permission to do so.
You need a, a form of a vote.
A, a form of a vote, or we need to sign the application. Sorry.
Oh, it's fair.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Thanks, Abby.
Okay, um, maybe before we get off that, for the comments that came up, both this recent one and Christine yours earlier, what we just had was a discussion about the redesign of the intersections being funded by the Mashworks funding and support of this overall project. You know, the fact that we're not doing something different relative to this investigation you have around the pedestrian stuff, I don't think it's off the table for the town. It's off the table for this project and the redesign, but I, I don't, the way this conversation went, I don't, I actually don't understand, and I don't, I wouldn't want you to walk away and say, I just got shut down. They just ignored me. Saying it's not part of this, of this project, but I wouldn't rule out the idea, and it may be after the intersection is the place, and we actually have the experience to see how we're laying out, how we can deal with this, but there's, there's some, well, while some arguments are, we want sidewalks all the way from up at the top of Harding Street here, where I live, all the way to center of town, which is a really expensive thing to do. What you're asking for around sidewalks around, around about, where we already have a sidewalk on one side of the roundabout, I don't think that's as big, the plus route's closer to town. I don't think that's as big a remote lift as an idea for the town to tackle as, let's do an entire street all the way, you know, halfway into town, so.
I honestly could care less about the sidewalks. I want crosswalks, and it was not made clear at the first meeting that they were, they were dependent.
I didn't even appreciate, I didn't even appreciate that till now, and I, it's sorta, 'cause I was thinking, why can't you just slap some paint down, and we're there?
Exactly, you missed it, exactly what we asked, and like-
Because that's what we talked about at the last meeting, is crosswalks.
Well, that's what I thought, that's all I thought it was, that I learned something about you. We all heard something about you.
So, but, you know, can I ask a question, Christine? I know at one point when we authorized Mo to look at some sidewalks, there was one that was going to be on, is it Winter Street that comes out?
I think that's one of the, um, I don't know, I think that's one of the complete streets we're running.
Yeah, and so, we haven't started that yet, right? So, I mean, it is food for thought to think, I don't know how much it would cost to try to put a sidewalk that-
The projects have already been approved? So we may have not started the work, but the projects and scope have already been approved in the complete streets, right?
Okay.
So I don't think we can change it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you can have Mo come in and talk about whether or not there's additional projects, but I don't think we can change the design that's already been approved. But we can talk to him.
I mean, 'cause, 'cause you think about, he's actually putting a sidewalk on a street that's one street removed from this busy intersection area. I mean, I can reach out to him, just pick his brain and-
The grant's already approved, so I, we couldn't go back and change it to move it to a different location. That would be a great possibility.
And when does that grant have to be used by?
I don't know the time very much on that.
Okay. Just food for thought.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to change it.
Christian Donner, 92 Green Street. One last question, and I wanna move on to the next agenda item myself, but, and I'm not sure anybody, I'm not suggesting anybody here knows the answer to this, but we're not really talking, when you say about safe landing or, or refuge or whatever the requirement is, it doesn't mean you have to build a sidewalk on all of Harding Street. Wouldn't it suffice to just put a little concrete pad? I mean, people walk.
So, so you're asking the wrong group right now, because Jeff obviously knows more than we do, and, and we, we have people that are paid consultants that would not-
I understand that, but I, the, the argument that we can't talk about this because it costs so much money to build sidewalks everywhere, I'm not, you know, I'm questioning that, because I think there would be ways to do it without building sidewalks everywhere.
Well, a sidewalk's a sidewalk, and it either meets the code or doesn't meet the code. You just can't say you have a sidewalk that, and then, and then you really don't, you just have something that's kinda dug up to look like a sidewalk. I mean, you know, there's-
But, yeah, but, but Christine, to your point, we don't, we don't know about the sidewalk part of the crosswalks until tonight.
Yeah, we don't know the answer to that, but we're happy to say-
And so we don't really know the answer. Certainly, if there's a completely, and, and Abby, this is not, this is not your project, this is broader town needs. The, if, if there's a super simple way to expedite crosswalks, that we have to do something on both sides, and it's, it's a trivial thing to do, well, then I guess we can make everybody a lot happier than, than maybe they are right now. If, if that's a feasible thing. Until, until tonight, I didn't even realize that was a requirement. I thought, just put the paint down, people know where it is, and you're good to go. And apparently, it's not that simple.
ADA has a couple of things you need to comply to.
Yeah, that's, that also-
The crosswalk memorial lands in grass.
So, what's that?
The crosswalk memorial over the cross street lands in grass.
So, Renee, there are plenty of crosswalks in town that are not legal, that we are in the process of changing, including one right down here that we're getting ready to fix. I, I can't, I can't fix all of them, and I can't fix what other people did and what the rules were in place at the time that they were put in. But I can only do what, and follow the law from what I have here.
It was back when Medfield was an outlaw town, that did whatever it felt like it was.
It was the good old boy handshake network. Not acceptable.
All right, uh, let's move on to the next item. The, next is a discussion item, and this is a discussion of the next steps in the timeline regarding parcel beyond Hospital Road. For those who are following this story closely, you're all aware, we've had one public discussion about the possibility of a public-private partnership designed to put up a recreation facility on the twelve acres of developable land that the town has south of Hospital Road. The advantage of doing that, potential advantage of doing that, is that the Parks and Rec, actually, the town would get a rec, it may not just be Parks and Rec, because the open space and recreation plan calls for a community center that would meet more than just the needs of, of the Parks and Rec Department. But we might get a, a facility at the developer's expense that would basically get us a facility we don't have, and as the FAFs center got condemned, suddenly, the, the attractiveness of being able to do that ramped up significantly. So that was the idea that was put on the table at our last meeting. To, to, speaking personally, going into it, I was anticipating that the town would be broadly supportive of that, because for thirty years that I've been here, at least theoretically, the town has been broadly supportive of a Parks and Rec facility. We've just never gotten around to building one. So this would have been in, in the face of the school project, which is pending, a school roof replacement project that is, you know, of the similar magnitude to the school, to a school project, not maybe as big as a brand-new school, but still a big deal. In the face of those demands, and probably another school project somewhere ten or fifteen years down the road, down at Wheelock, it seemed like a way to be able to move ahead in getting a, a recreation facility for the town. At the last public hearing that we had, I would say, while we had people speaking on both sides of the issue, there were more vocal spokespeople, people speaking on behalf of not doing anything at all with the land, just keeping it open for a range of reasons, from artistry to views from the, from the highway, to environmental issues, to concerns about interference with the town's ability to use the sledding hill. So the, the vocal conversation in the last public meeting was not exclusively against the idea, but it was probably more people speaking against the idea than were speaking for it. I don't think that's necessarily a reflection of the town's sentiments, but that's how that, if anybody's interested, you can watch the recording, and you'll see how that went out. Tonight's discussion is around recognizing that the select board's interest is in putting together a concept, that's an actual concept that people can take a look at and put before the town, so that the townspeople can make a decision, do you wanna do this or not? And then we have a clear path forward on whether we're gonna keep it just undeveloped, or at least we're not gonna do this project, or whether the possibility of actually getting a recreation facility built sooner rather than later is important enough that people wanna do it. To be clear, the town has already made other open space in order to get the twelve developable acres that we're talking about here. So as far as what we're doing here, it's actually been part of the Mass, the State Hospital Master Reuse Plan. It's, it, it's not specifically part of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, but that plan called for the town to develop a recreation center. So at least to the extent there was a sentiment expressed there, those are some needs that we're trying to respond to. So, the discussion here is how, recognizing there's different opinions, how would we move forward, how should we move forward? It's clear to us, we polled the article for next week's town meeting, because instead of it being broad support for doing it, and we were gonna move ahead, there's enough pushback that it's like, okay, this is gonna take a year of vetting it, of getting public input, of actually developing what that concept actually would be. Because the opposition is to sort of a conceptual point, but no, no clear design. And a lot of the things people criticized had to do with just that illustrative example, not an actual proposal. So the question is, how do we actually move forward with that? I will say that I have a, a chart that I'll share with you when it gets to me, but I, I'll start with you guys just talking, if you have some initial thoughts you want to put on the table.
Well, I, I support putting out some form of an RFP to get an idea for what can be built. All we have in front of us right now is one idea, that's all it is, is an idea, and we don't know what other ideas could come forward. But knowing that we need a new Parks and Rec Center, for the record, in 2008, we, we were going to build on McCarthy Park, we lost by one vote. One vote, and we would have been moving forward, and lord knows what, what the conversation would be right now. Fact of the matter is, this area has been talked about. One vote, I was in Singapore, my brother had me on the phone, when I literally went back, when I had to read the meeting, the, the annual reports to cover, I forget the summary I was doing, and lo and behold, one lousy vote changed the, the whole trajectory of what was going on with Parks and Rec. So I think, I think putting something out there to get some feedback, and letting anyone who knows, bidding on it, that it still holds, we still need to get support from the town to officially move forward with something. But to get some ideas out in front of the residents, so they know what they're either saying yes or no to, versus saying, we don't want anything ever built. Well, I've said this before, and I'll say it right now, the only thing I want every resident to think about is, they all cover their own tail with their properties. If they have a piece of property, and it's twenty acres, they're gonna try to monetize that piece of land as best they can, unless everyone comes forward and says, no, Eileen, we're gonna sign a document that I own, I own twenty acres, but I'm only gonna sell it, so one house stays here forever and ever. People are selling their properties and letting trees get cut, cut down, let pieces of property getting leveled, and yeah, it changes the look and the feel. But that's what they have the right to do. And this town has forty percent open space, which is wildly impressive. And I don't wanna, I'm not advocating we just start clearing everything, but if we've got twelve acres to monetize best we can, and have that money go towards, to try to help with some other bills, that's what I'm wa, I'm extremely open to, to exploring that. To just shut it down without doing any real homework, other than one conversation, one select board meeting, I think we're being extremely short-sighted.
So I guess I'm in no rush to do anything with that land. I think it'll only get more valuable with, if Trinity goes forward with their development. It'll, it'll, if you're talking about monetizing it, it'll bring more of a return after the Trinity project is finished. I guess the second point that I would make is that anything that we get for that land, we have to- anything that we get for that land, we have to give half of it to the state under the agreement that we have. So that the land disposition agreement for the state hospital project, so it's not as big a return as you might think because everything is just half. And then the third point I would make is if we're going to have, if the town wants to do something with that land, I think we should create a process for the town to have that discussion and not just ad hoc respond to a proposal that comes before us. And I don't know what that process is. Clearly, the state hospital reuse process went on for a long, long time, too long a time unfortunately, I thought. But I think we do need to have some sort of process where the town can have their say.
Gus, just to clarify something you said, that when the town signed the agreement with the state, we gave up acreage elsewhere in town for open space. So we've, so do we get to pull that land back? I mean, if we're not going to follow up on why we did the trade with the state so that we could build a municipal building on this land. And I also will say, when you're working with the state, you never know what might be coming down the pike where it could be a handshake that says, you know what? You keep the money and we may or may not do something and that's a, so I don't, I don't, I don't believe 100% that the state will take 50%. There's so many deals that go on and we know ones that have occurred already that there's things that they want to potentially walk away from or do things with. So I take that, your comment there Pete, I understand why you say it, but it's not engraved in stone.
What the land disposition agreement says.
So my view's in a sense a little softer on the monetizing side than Eileen. Somewhat in agreement with Pete around, I thought it took too long for us to get the state hospital plan pulled together, but the plan itself was a solid plan. It won awards. Clearly, that plan reflected the sentiment of the town in all of its dimensions to include what was south of Hospital Road at the time that plan was put together. And the thing that surprised me about that whole thing is when we finally get past the planning process and we were getting ready to develop it, we put that, we put the design guidelines out to developers. And I was thinking they were going to come back to us and say, you guys have just been doing pie in the sky planning here and what you want, but it doesn't work. And to my surprise, the developers all said, no, your design is reasonable. And I think Trinity is the proof of the pudding that actually what the town came up with that it wanted was, you know, the bullseye was big enough that Trinity could come in and hit that bullseye and we're on a good path forward with the campus. Speaking, I think I'm probably speaking for all of us if you really come down to it, but speaking personally and thinking about this. On the Select Board, we try to understand what the pressures and the needs and the desires of the town are and try to figure out some way to do the best job we know how to balance them. So we, I can attest that for 30 years that I've been in town, at least theoretically, the town has said, we really want a Parks and Rec facility. And my youngest son wasn't even born and now he's off, out on his own in his late twenties. And there never was any Parks and Rec facility in all the time I've been here. I've got no particular personal stake in that, whether that's there or not. But I know the town wants it. And then with the loss of the FAFF Center, which itself was sort of a marginal facility, if you want to come down to it, the pressure on Parks and Rec is even greater. And so in a way, I look at it and say, well, the town now is sort of going to have to fish or cut bait. Do we want a Parks and Rec program? Do we want Parks and Rec facilities or don't we? Because right now we all say we do, it's just we don't want to put any money into it. That's piece one. The monetization is important because what's heavily on my mind is we have a school project that's coming up. And that school project, as much as any of us might be fighting trying to hold the ultimate impact on the taxpayers down, I have no doubt that that school project is going to present this town with greater financial pressures than the one that failed it. Not because it's going to be bigger, but because it's farther down the road and there's construction costs and inflation. And so trying to find a way to get, try to find a way to get money that is not taxes that taxpayers pay to soften the blow of that project is on my mind. The fact in this case that if the state gets half of what we get, well, whatever we get. The thing that surprised me in the discussions we had leading up to that public discussion was that it wasn't a trade-off between getting a free Parks and Rec facility or getting money for your land. It was actually, we'll pay you the market rate for the land and we'll get you the Parks and Rec facility. So it was surprised me that it could have both. If we make $6 million and 3 million of it goes to the state, that's $3 million we get. Doesn't make sense to me to say, oh, we'd have to give the state $3 million, so let's not get anything. Let's hold and wait. Pete may be right, maybe it's worth a lot later on, but the discussions we've had so far aren't around more economically intensive development of that property. They've been more the question around, should we develop it at all or keep it as open space? So I'm not sure that, I think there's some other pieces of the property up there that we want to wait. This one doesn't strike me as one of the top ones. If we can put it to a town use that's sort of consistent and compatible with what we're already doing with that land down there. So to Pete's point, I do have a process. It's, and if you'll, I'll hand out to you guys and I'll send one, you can send one up to Christine. I just did this, so I had it handwritten. My printer's giving me a hard time. This is, this is how I'm looking at the process, is there's two things going on. In our last public hearing or public discussion, people raised the question around the specific terms and conditions. When we got the state's agreement to let us develop 12 acres, the specific wording of that agreement was that we would, I think, have two years, Bill will check me on the details here, two years for us to specify what those 12 acres are. We didn't know how we wanted to use it. We didn't want to commit to doing something without, you know, that would constrain us. So we didn't designate it and I think the informal feedback we've gotten from the state is that's okay. That may not be true, but that's an important thing for us to figure out. And I think the way we figure that out is the first step in this, on that side of the process is we designate the 12 acres that we want to set aside for development. That also will help squelch some of the concerns people had around, this is a project that's going to ruin the sledding hill. Well, that's clearly part of the criteria for what those 12 acres is going to be, is it's not going to use the sledding hill. I have, I picked up, this is just me talking, but I picked up some of the sensitivities to people that didn't like development there is, well, if it's going to be up high in a high spot and there's going to be this big looming building, that suggests to me that the land we're looking to use is probably the land that's a little farther down on the site where the actual elevation, the base elevation is going to start us lower. So we're not, you know, we're not putting something fronting on Hospital Road. We're putting something that's a little more visually discreet. And I'm sure there's other things, there's issues around drainage, the way the drainage is being set up right now. There's issues around, would we have to change traffic flow? There are issues, I don't see these as major, around would we have to reroute the trails? Would we have to reroute the cross-country path, this course? All things that can be done within the land that's not going to be touched, but those are considerations. Those are, so those are just some things I came up with. That's just to get to the 12 acres. Now, the second thing, Christian, I think you brought up a second concern, which is, well, when this was presented, it was supposed to only be for one municipal building. And I believe that was actually not a requirement, not a restriction. That was what we envisioned we might do with it back at the time, that I think Parks and Rec facility was the number one thought of how we would use that land. So I don't think that's a legal restriction on us. It was what we thought at the time was the most likely way we'd use that. But we need to make sure that that's all true.
It was, it was what was voted on at town meeting.
No, no, it was not. It was what was represented that we do.
It was on the.
Let me finish the, no, Christian, it was not a decision that was voted on. I don't want to waste time on that right now. My point is, there is a second spot, there'll be a time for someone to make the case that that was nailed down in a specific vote at town meeting. And I'll tell you categorically, I don't believe it was, but that's why I've got that second step in here is to sit there and say, now is there any reason we can't do something like what we might be looking at? That's kind of the land usage flow. I got another flow, which is we need to initiate a public discussion around what the public wants done here. There's a group of people that don't want anything done there. It's just open space, even if it's developable, even if we took 12 other acres and made it open space in order to make it developable, it would be just a crime aesthetically and environmentally to do anything at all with that 12 acres. There are people who feel that. There's also people who basically say, we're looking for a recreation facility for our kids, maybe for us, and this is a good place to do it and this is a good way to get there. And we need to hear those voices. We need to hear what it is people actually want in terms of, you know, if we do have a facility, what would it be for? The open space and recreation plan broadened the constituencies that have an interest in a recreation center. It's not just Parks and Rec. Could be COA, could be the schools, could be, who knows, could be Medfield Outreach because some of this had more to do with just a place that kids could get together and things like that. We need to have that dialogue. I don't think it's a five-year state hospital master reuse plan process. I'm hoping that we can do that all in about a year, but that's a different flow around what would you want? What, you know, what should that facility be? Those come together and then I think we need a committee that needs to come together to sit there and say, let's craft an RFP for what it is we want that reflects what the town would like to see done with that land. And here's how this works, is the RFP, just like we did with the state hospital, the RFP existed before the town approved the disposition article at town meeting. So for those who don't want anything done with the land, your opportunity to make your voice heard and make it the decision is going to be around the land disposition article. If the town votes down the land disposition article, then that RFP that reflects what the people who want a recreation center want, the project dies. And I won't say it dies permanently, maybe there's some other purpose that could come in that would be up. But as far as what we're doing here, that project's dead if the land disposition article is not passed with people understanding what the RFP is. If it passes, then the RFP gets issued, we solicit proposals, we evaluate the proposals, assuming at least one of them is satisfactory.
So can I ask you, you lost me just at the very end there.
Yep.
So you're saying you, we wouldn't go out and look for ideas based on, because when you talked about the state hospital, what made me think of is, and I still get it to this day when I walk at the state hospital, people are like, oh, what happened to the retail? What happened to the condos? So we put that in it and the developer came back and said, we are just going to have living space. Like what you guys may want, it's not doable. So that's why I want to make sure here, we go out and get, we get feedback from the community that says, these are the things we're thinking. I would like to make sure we go out and get an RFP so we know what could be potentially acted on. But if we, if we never do RFPs, we never really know whether anyone's even mildly interested.
Well, I think you're talking about RFI's. So in other words, a developer is not going to, a developer is not going to go to the time and expense of developing a proposal when you're saying we're window shopping. A developer will, if you want to just sit there and say, the town is entertaining ideas or evaluating alternative ideas for the development of a recreation facility and a public-private partnership, or however we want to frame it and put it out as an RFI to various developers and say, here's something we're trying to do. Do you have any thoughts about how we should do it or what you could do in this direction? That's all, I think that's all in bounds. But that's, and that's what we did with the development committee before we put out the RFP. We put out an RFI and just asked people to react to the design guidelines.
Because I think like, I know one of the ladies that came and spoke and she was passionate about the sledding hill and making sure that that doesn't change. You know, all I could think about when that was, if we were lucky to get one more vote in 2008, we were actually going to have a little art center within the proposed Parks and Rec building, right? Right now, there's really no place that the town manages that we can have those type of activities. And I got interviewed, I don't know if you guys have been interviewed by the young man from Severian yet about the proposed building. And so I said to him is that, like, if we could do some community center, you get arts and crafts, you get, you know, cooking lessons, you get different gatherings for our youth and residents to come use. We don't have that right now and that's, that's something that's sorely missing, hence, you know, looking towards a community center.
So anyway, this process, I think we can make it available. If anybody wants to see my pretty elementary graphics, I have one extra copy if you want a souvenir copy and I'll make it available electronically.
I think I got the very end of your ink.
Yeah, fortunately, that was just before I left to come here. I put it up on the table, I think for now, so Pete and Eileen, if you don't have anything more to say. It looks like Bill wants to say something.
Oh, you want to say something?
Go ahead.
So some of this I've said before, I just want to say it again, and quickly, Bill Masaro buttered to the state hospital property. I was on the negotiation committee for the purchase of the property. I attended probably every one of the master plan for the hospital committees and everything else. So there's some confusion about some of the facts and somehow we got to some of the places that we got to and everything else. But one of the important things in the negotiations for the 12 acres was that the town could do anything that it wanted to do with it. As we went through the process of the master plan, the master plan looked at historical issues, looked at the fact that it was part of the historic farm district, looked at the fact that there were eight historic structures down in the area of the Odyssey House, and then talked about what kind of an impact would this have on the whole district and whatever would happen on that piece of property. And if you look at the master plan, you'll find a whole section on design criteria and everything else. And it's mostly directed at Viewscape and the impact on what you see looking at it from the hospital property. And the idea was not to put anything in there that would detract from the value of the property when we went to sell the property. And I would suggest that you may have that same issue here. Now, what I'm getting towards is that you need to give guidance to the, whatever committee you form. Now, you know, I spent a lot of time responding to the RFPs that went out for the hospital. I'd like not to have to do that again. And I would just make a couple of suggestions and let me tell you what they are. First off, your RFP should emphasize the fact that it's part of the historic farm district. Emphasize the fact that the master plan has design criteria that should not impact the development that you're putting, planning to put forward with Trinity. You might want to talk to National Park Service about impacting potential tax credits that everybody is going to need for the future development of any section of the hospital property, you know, across the street and the core campus and everything else. Let me see what else I got here. The, the purchase of, the 12 acres can be anywhere. There's no question about, you can pick where you want the 12 acres. Again, that's why I talk about Viewscape and everything else. The idea was to get it down in the grotto, if you will, or in the hollow and everything else. I would again, point out again that there are at least eight historic structures there. You're probably going to have archaeological issues as well. Those things should all be part of your discussions when you go out to the, to the RFP. I'm not against the development. Christian made a comment about the town voting on that being the area for the Park and Rec Center. That was not, the decision to make that the Park and Rec Center was to show a potential use during the master plan meetings, just like they used Bell Forge, or what is now Bell Forge, they used the chapel and the cultural center as a potential start for how we could get some infrastructure done. We did the same thing with, down in the grotto for a Park and Rec building. This is what it would cost if we put a Park and Rec building in there. This would, how we could support, we could pay for the infrastructure and everything else. What the town voted on was the master plan. It didn't vote on a specific use down in that area, but it was in description of what was a possibility there, so.
Bill, just two questions for you. What I envisioned is that first step I put, which was figure out what 12 acres we want to designate, that would be the first place where the town would be looking at things like historic structures or archaeological issues.
Right.
So to the extent that we still designate acres of land and there's still issues, then sure, anybody that proposes on has to recognize that.
Has to accommodate satisfying that and without impacting, again, without impacting any benefits to the town from having those structures.
You jumped right to an RFP and I'm not arguing with my process, I'm just pointing out something. You jumped right to the RFP. What I was suggesting is before the actual RFP development takes place, that there's a conversation within the town around what do you actually want in a facility like this? Because there's, there's a bunch of constituencies that all would have their own ideas. And so that's before you even get to the RFP to know what you're going to ask.
I understand, no, I agree, no, I agree with, I agree with your process. No, I agree, no, I agree with, I agree with your process essentially, it's just what's, what are some of the elements that go into that process? The other thing I would mention is that when they, when the master plan committee first started looking at potential uses for the core campus and everything else, they went out looking for lightning strikes and everything else, and they just went out and had just a general discussion, semi-official, you know, off-the-record kind of discussions with what, what do you think we could put there? And they went out to a broad number of people, and Gil Rogers was, was part of that, that exercise. That might be worthwhile, talking to somebody just to get some ideas of what else could go in there besides whether it was an athletic facility or whether it was something else. I, again, I feel for a Park and Rec. They definitely have been on the list, probably, so I've been to town 47 years now, and I recall them being on the list probably for 30 or 35 of those 47 years, and constantly being bumped. So, I mean, I, again, I have no objections to a facility, I just, again, pointing out the things you don't want to shoot yourself in the foot, impact future development or anything else, without recognizing what some of the limitations down there ought to be. That's, that's my only point.
Bill, I want to react to that comment that you just made, and speaking personally, I think the way I'm looking at this is not just what could we do with it and go get ideas, because that says my number one priority is how much can we cash in on this property? I actually am looking at it saying, "There's this need that the town has for a recreation facility, and we have an option here that not only could get us a recreation facility, but could get us money."
I, no, no, I don't disagree with you, Gus, I'm just saying, I mean, that there may be other opportunities as well that...
There might be other opportunities around the structure of partnership, too.
Yes, yes.
So that part, I think, that's our point. In fact, one of the tricky things we have is to figure out how to have this conversation and get to a point, this was triggered by a developer who said, "I got an idea, why'd you do this?"
Right.
But that developer has to stay completely out of this process.
No, and the first discussion was, was Discus Golf or something along those lines, too, and everything else, which I...
Right, and that could be a piece of the, that could be a piece of the answer to this.
But again, still with the same restrictions, the same requirements, the same things to be aware that are there, and then unique characteristics of the property and of the area, that's, that's important. I'm not even getting into environmental issues or concerns or anything else, I mean, that's just it.
Which of you, I saw you stand, and I just noticed you were over there, I think you were the one next to Laura, I think.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. Personally, I regret you pulling the article. A handful of people came that made a lot of noise, and I respect their opinion, but it was a handful of people, and at the town meeting, the people who will be affected by the community center or the recreation center will be the younger families. And the families that are in the densely populated areas of town will be using that recreation or community center much more than the few houses on Hospital Road, except when Trinity finishes the development, those families will greatly appreciate having that community center down the road. There's a lot of green area, I don't think this is a big deal, and I think that if it does go to town meeting, there'll be a lot of people who will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, guys. Jeff, I'm in Metecomet Street. I appreciate the conversation. You know, I've been pretty vocal, I've also written you guys a couple of times. I like the fact that there's openness to involving the community. For me, there's a couple of things. One is, we're lumping two things together. This 12 acres and the opportunity, which is speculative, hypothetical, scratch paper, as we've, you've all said.
At this point.
We've all agreed at this point, right. That this is just, who knows if there's any possibility of getting something free or, or whatever. I'm saying, we need to look at the Park and Rec's requirement. I am all for it and would vote for it. And by the way, I've moved to this town without kids, and I'd like to be able to use a place that Eileen mentioned with other things beyond, you know, basketball, okay? So there's a lot of people in town that might benefit from it, not against that. What I'm saying is, if we're going to look at it, I think we should be looking at it from the Park and Rec's need. I can't, I don't put them together, because that's just speculation. In other words, try to lump in the 12 acres. I'm not saying, "Don't look at an RFP for 12 acres." I'm all for that, but I'm not trying to lump it with, "But we need to get a free Park and Rec's building there as well." I'm saying two separate things. If we, if we believe we need a Park and Rec's building, great, let's look it, because there are other opportunities here. There are other town-owned opportunities. I've identified things. There's, there are opportunities, and we should, but we'll only know that if we look at it.
When you say that, if you've identified, like what?
So, so, a couple of things. Has, have we talked to, and I know there's noise about, you know, whether the Park and Rec's, you know, commission or department gets along with Kingsbury Club, but you have what I call an incumbent here, in town. You have a person. Just let me finish with, I trust me.
Let me ask you a question, are you a member of Kingsbury Club?
Let me finish.
I just want to ask you a question, when you make that statement, are you a member of Kingsbury Club? Because if you are, you understand the building. If you're not, you're someone that drives by and sees it as an athletic facility.
I have been inside the building.
Okay.
I have toured the building, I've actually spoken to the people that own the company, own the firm.
Yeah.
I have stood on the piles of asphalt and looked around and taken pictures, and you are right, you may only be able to build on three acres, and one acre is 45,000 square feet, and if you multiply that three times, you have a lot. What I'm saying is, there's an opportunity, has, and maybe a question, has this board, I'm not talking about Parks and Rec, has this board spoken to that incumbent that has a, would be technically a competing business in town, and said, "You know what? You've got this land right next door to you, you've got a parking lot that you could easily extend, I know there's wetlands, there's many more wetlands, acres more on the property we're talking about." Let me finish.
They don't have enough parking there today, I can tell you that right now. They've come to us and asked for...
Understood, but you have three acres, or it's actually 11, but you're right, if you say you can only use three. I'm saying, why can't you approach them and say, "Why don't you do your best to essentially eliminate competition and get us what we need? We need a Park and Rec's building. We own the land, we do a deal, they build something that we need." I would be okay with building a 20,000 square foot, that's the number that's been used, and put it on that property. There's, there's, the Wheelock School has a spit of land to the left of the school, between the driveway and the school, that could easily fit a building, that seems reasonable. I mean, again, I guess what I'm saying is, we should look, we should step back and say, "If we're going to have a committee and we're going to have a need, we should look at what Parks and Rec's needs and figure out that it may not be on this 12 acres, but it could be somewhere else, and let that group decide." As far as the 12 acres are concerned, yes. Personally, I have one opinion, but there are 7,000, 9,777 people that could vote differently than me. But I think you could look at that separately, you know, in a different way, but I don't like the lumping the two together, because I think they're two separate things, and I get it, we've, somebody approached us and says, "This is going to be free," but I'm concerned, as you guys know, I am concerned about a deal like that. So I think there are other opportunities, and we should continue, we should look at that instead. And then, you know, and all the reasons, all the reasons, in town, out of town, you know, this side, that side, you know? I don't live on Hospital Road, I live in Metecomet Street, I'm not affected by it, but I care about it, so you guys know personally, so.
So I guess I would just respond by saying, it's, it's not that you're going to get a free Park and Rec facility, you're not going to pay for it by getting less value for the, for what you're giving up, so you're, you're basically paying for it that way.
Right.
It's not free.
Right. The other opportunity is that you get, you, we pay for it, because, yeah, I know there's other projects coming in, hundreds of millions of dollars that we're going to have to vote on, but in the scheme of things, it's a few more bucks, and then maybe, it sounds like Park and Rec's does really well and can pay for it over time, you know, maybe pay the debt, don't know.
That's one of the nice things, I think, about Park and Rec is that they, they make money on their programs, and so if we provide them a building where they can run more programs, they can make more money and they can pay a lot of the debt service on the, on the building.
So I have the spreadsheet still at home, and I shared it with Lauren and team. So back in the 2006, '07, '08 timeframe, when I was Parks and Rec Commissioner, it's exactly what I did, it's like, here's our current structure, here's where future structure can be, here are our current programs, here's the dollars that it generates, here's our new programs, here's the dollars it could generate. But mind you, when you, when you build bigger, you have a bigger staff, more equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So it cannot be self-sufficient, but can it make a dent in the annual budget that? Yes, for sure. So those things, I've, Lauren has all of that, Nick Brown has all of that, I gave and said, as you start looking at what you're doing. But I, I think there's, if we do the, we'll, we'll pay for it, well, that hasn't worked in the last 47 years, so now we've got to figure out, how can we do it on top of the school costs coming in? You know, if you guys have been paying attention to the Warren Committee, the, the new roofs for the school is double-digit millions, it's really expensive. And, you know, if it starts leaking on the school book, guess what jumps as a priority? Fixing that roof. So there are some very high-cost items that are coming at this town, and we can't turn a blind eye to them. So we need to look at ways of being creative, and if, if another group will come in and say, "We can help you with a structure," we'd be foolish not to look at it. And if we get it signed off in perpetuity, it means it's ours forever and ever, no matter what happens over, you know, in the other lot. But I also, I mean, I think what's good is your ideas, Jeff, to me, this committee, which I think, Gus, you have a great idea, to get people together, and then other people can chime in with, you know, other creative ideas, but I, I, as a member of Kingsbury, I just know what they're, they're so constrained today for their membership, for their parking, anything that adds more to that, they just don't have the bandwidth. Because as a member, I'd be like, "Time out, I'm already seeing my fees go up, and now you're potentially putting more burden. Am I, as a member, going to end up paying more of that? Like, there's a lot, there's more moving parts than meet the naked eye.
I understand, but we're speculating, too. I mean, I understand you have firsthand experience. If you're, if you have redevelopment opportunities on, on an adjacent property, then a designer looks at, or an architect, you know, somebody look, an engineer looks at how you would add parking. Obviously, you have to meet a criteria, I hear you.
You'd have to gain access to the back of that, which I think right now, you've got all of the new condos at, at the enclave, there's a very narrow road there today.
Yep.
That's what you're having access to, but it's, yeah, I, I won't, I'm not going to go there tonight, I'll pass.
Jeff, the basic point I think you're making is that we should look at different options on how to do that, and I totally agree with that. That's the whole point of saying, this one developer's plan, it's not that, I mean, when you say we don't know if we can get a free facility, I think we do, that's what he's offering. Now, what he's going to pay us for the land to get the free facility, what he's going to charge us for using his facility, which is actually an appended facility because, because of how he wants to run it, I don't know what all that comes out to be, but for sure, we don't want to have a process, we can't, we can't even legally have a process where we're sitting there with a developer saying, "Okay, what do you think we should do next?" This has to be an independent process, and that independent process is definitely going to, should be open to any alternative ways to get the job done. The one minor correction I would make, is you keep referring to it as a Parks and Rec facility.
Okay.
I think it's important, in this case, Parks and Rec is undoubtedly a dominant stakeholder in this whole process, but the thing that I think the town has said it wants is a community recreation center, and there are other constituencies, they're not at odds with Parks and Rec, but their concerns might fall outside of the traditional Parks and Rec focus. And I, and I just want to make sure the, the voices are heard. I don't know that we can give everybody everything they want in a facility that we can get for free, but, you know, so it's just that it's not just Parks and Rec, it's actually a broader question we're trying to answer, and without doubt, without a doubt, Parks and Rec is going to be a dominant piece of that, but maybe not the exclusive piece.
Thanks.
Christian Donner, 92 Green Street, excuse me. I agree with everything that Jeff said, we've spoke at length about all this, but I do want to make, you know, one more additional point, that I find that convoluted two separate goals, which are, you know, getting, making money by selling the property, getting a Parks and Rec's building, makes the decision-making process much more complicated and, 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 you know, difficult to follow for the voters, I think. But I want to just really, you know, at this time, respond to a few things that you've, you have said earlier, because I think that there are, I mean, I have questions about them, and maybe you can answer them. So the idea, first of all, the idea that we would be getting a free building, the town would be getting a free building, seems questionable to me, has to develop, because that hasn't really clarified, been clarified, we were like, talking about the, we're not talking specifics, what would the agreement actually be? The, the building, or the developer gets to build the basketball center, and then next to it, the developer builds a recreational, whatever we call it, facility, and then hands the town the keys and says, "It's yours forever, and you don't owe me anything," is that the idea? Or is there, are you just not being open about what the agreement actually would be?
Chris, you're looking for an agreement, we've had exactly one public discussion
Well, you can't then say, "We're getting a free Parks and Rec's building," when you're not.
You're kind of like saying, "Well, gee, he said I'd have a free house, tell me what the house is." It's like, the whole point when we had the initial discussions is, is this guy even worth talking to?
Yeah, okay.
Because everybody's got a plan.
All right, so, answer, I think that's an answer.
You're asking good questions, but those are the questions in the final agreement.
Next question. The, well, it's free to the taxpayer, why don't we just sell the 12 acres, then, you know, we get whatever, millions from, and maybe the state wants some of it, maybe not. It's not free.
We could, that could, that property could have been sold as a four-kick facility.
It's not free to the taxpayer. My point is, there is a cost to the taxpayer by losing that property, a cost that we can't really quantify, but in my opinion, it is by far higher than, you know, what we are supposed to get in dollars, because you can't get that back.
But that's a personal opinion, there are people in this town who probably could give a flying who about...
I know, well, you, obviously, but there are lots of people that I've met that do care a lot about it, and I...
Oh, that's clear.
That's fine, so I just want that clarification. It's not free, don't say it's free to the taxpayer, it's not.
The facility's free, that the offer is...
We have to spend $22 million to build a new facility, and someone comes in through this RFI or RFP and says, "I will do the following, and I will build a 20,000 square foot building on this property, and it's yours, it's included in the cost of which we're buying the land, I think we just saved the town $22 million."
No, because you could have gotten 22 million more for what you gave up.
But, well, depending...
You're not, you're not getting a free apple out of this.
That's the point, that's what sold me on it being worth talking to him, and he said, "No, we pay commercial, put that thing out for sale."
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, he's not going to be in business long if he's giving away 22 million here and there.
It is speculation.
Well, here's the deal, it's, it's, all we did was listen to an idea, and we put it out there, and it's drawing this conversation, there's nothing wrong with that.
But you were going to bring this to a town meeting vote, I mean...
No, no, we were bringing it to a vote to see if we could sell the land. It wasn't this, it was not for this basketball facility.
Understood, I understand that distinction.
It was literally to give us the right to do it and then put the RFP out.
But what normally happens when we do something like that is, exactly that happens.
Well, I don't, I have not seen that happen.
I'm almost done, last point.
Can I just be clear on one thing on that point?
Yes.
Again, speaking personally, I didn't think this was going to be controversial. I thought people said, "You're going to get us a Parks and Rec facility, and we're going to get money for it." I didn't think it was going to be a hard thing.
You know why?
It became clear...
You know why it's controversial? Because it sounds too good.
Yeah, because some people want open space.
It's, no, I don't care, I, honestly, I don't care less about the open, I mean, that's, I'm not really true, but what I care about is making good decisions, and that, without knowing, it just sounded like we are, we are like jumping the gun. We have no requirements from Parks and Recs what they actually need. We are starting with a solution. In my job, you start with a problem definition. Starting with a solution almost always leads to bad outcomes. So that is really, last point, you said...
The point, at least, knowledge, we listened to you, that's why we're...
I appreciate, I appreciate that, you give me time, yeah, that's very kind of...
I don't mean here, I just mean this whole process is different. I don't mean here, I just mean this whole process is different. We pulled the article.
Yeah, no, yeah, that was the right call, I think. But, um, and then last comment on the, um, the land disposition agreement that I read, all sixty or ninety pages of it. Um, the requirement to do that conservation land swap was not, um, a conservation restriction swap, was not contingent on actual development. I think the two-year limit was a two-year limit, it wasn't contingent.
I talked to them and they are fine with letting that go because, because, well, because there are things that D-CAM has not done in the LDA.
Okay.
And so they agree that there are things that they have not met either.
Okay, okay, good.
All right.
All right, I'm done, thank you.
One last comment?
Super quick, super quick. As someone who does not want an absolute flick of more additional traffic on Harding Street, I fully support this. This town needs this and my kids are on the way out, we're probably on our way out. This town needs a parking rec, it needs a rec center. I had to drive my kids to Wellesley to play basketball at eight o'clock at night. This town needs this and I will come to every meeting and fully support it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tracy Hogan Hospital Road. I for one, um, wanna keep the area open space. There are a lot of neighbors that do wanna keep it open space. It's, uh, there's a lot of wildlife in the area. It's a hotspot for bird watching. Um, I understand the need for, well, I don't really understand the need in that area when the Kingsbury Club is less than a mile away. It seems kind of ridiculous to build an exact facility comparable to what's there less than a mile away. I think, I agree with my neighbors, something should be worked out with the Kingsbury Club, maybe giving townspeople, senior citizens, an additional discount or something. It does, it doesn't make sense to make a duplicate facility in such close proximity if you wanna make it on the other end of town. Because to me, this sounds a little hypocritical that you don't wanna put sidewalks in that side of town, but you wanna build a rec center that is gonna draw children and families. There's no sidewalks. Are, is the town gonna commit that if this is built, they will put sidewalks in connecting the north side of town to the center of town?
No, no, there's two different needs.
Well, then, what's the point?
Your, your point you're making is you think open space is more important than a Parks and Rec facility. You think that the sidewalks are more important than a Parks and Rec facility. I understand your point.
No, no, I'm saying if you're, if you're.
A Parks and Rec facility is important or a recreation facility is important.
But if it gets built, the town has to commit to put sidewalks in.
We already have McCarthy Park that's used by, by kids all the time.
Yes, and it's a dangerous situation.
No, people, people usually get driven there.
And if you put a park and rec facility or a recreational facility, that's going to make the amount of people using that road and using that facility, who knows how much, if it's gonna double or triple, and then you have no access to get there safely other than a car. So what's that gonna do with the traffic in addition to three-hundred-and-fifty units that are gonna be there? Now you're gonna add a park and rec facility and no way to access town other than a car. I mean, it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Why are they commenting about Kingsbury Club? It's such a private business. Like, for us to assume that a private business is just gonna be like, oh, come on in. That's a, those basketball courts are a money, it, it's a private function. So like, we, we wanna have a Parks and Rec center that is open to the community, that you're not having to divide it with someone who's paying a hundred-and-forty-five to three-hundred-and-ninety dollars a month. So that's, to me, I think that that's setting kind of a false expectation because that facility, again, I'm a member, I'm there almost every day. I see Laurel there as well. It's crowded, it's crazy crowded.
I mean, point of order, they're, they're, they're private.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a process, no, no, hold. There's two of you and perhaps three of you. I'm gonna declare that you each have two minutes. And at sixteen past the hour, we're moving to the quorum for the, the annual town meeting. This has been a great, this has been, this has been a, a good, useful conversation, but I think the points that we're gonna usefully make here are pretty much made, so, uh. No, we're gonna, it's his first time, so we're gonna get there first.
Uh, I'll take thirty seconds. Uh, the, uh, we need to also look at the value of that property. People have been discussing and the word free should never be thrown around because if, if somebody's willing to build a facility, they're not willing to do it for free. Uh, it's not out of their good heart. Uh, they're making something from that, whether it's to purchase the property, et cetera, et cetera. My point is, the value is in the property. And once Trinity finishes their project up there, I wanna build a restaurant on that property. Because now that property's worth ten times more than what the town is willing to bargain out to do a park and recs. We need a park and recs facility, we do. But be very careful with the finan, talking about the financial value of that piece of property because it's, it's going to be extremely more valuable once Trinity does such a great job on their project. Thank you.
Thirty seconds. So I just wanna address Eileen's point. I mean, Onyx Partners is a private entity. Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're a private entity. So why do we classify them differently? You just said, well, Kingsbury Club is a.
Because there's two entities there.
I know, they do the nonprofit profit thing.
But you're calling out a business that, that already exists today and they're maxed out to someone building a new facility that he's going to make a profit when he's not doing his AAU stuff that he does for a nonprofit. He's going to make money off of those four, six, eight, again, this is all projection because this is just an idea that was brought to us. We're not acting on it, it's just give, it's, we're noodling with what could happen there and in return, because he gets a location that gives his business the ability to be successful, hey, we'll give you a twenty-thousand-foot building that we'll build there out of our pocket.
I, I know, I, I know.
It's just a money decision.
I understand, but I also believe that there's an opportunity for Kingsbury Club to very much have something there for this town.
I can tell you.
But you haven't asked them.
I have, I've had, sat across from the three owners and I cannot agree with the.
Then they should come here so that we all hear that.
No, because the response they gave me is no one's business, other than they're not interested, period.
Okay, I, I, I.
I, I literally sat across from the three of them.
At the end of the day, all I'm saying is, there's enough, and I don't think this would pass at town. You know what I think would pass at, at town meeting? That if we needed to build a Parks and Rec and pay for it, I really, to, in my heart, in my gut, this town would pay for it. That's just me. Maybe it's nine thousand other people.
That hasn't been true.
Pay for a, a community center, a park.
We've tried.
I hear you, but it is, but you've got people that probably would fight for it. I just wanna say, before we do, cause I don't think we should be looking at twelve acres and a park to feasibility, to, to look at feasibility of that. I wanna, I wanna look at it from the back door.
Two minutes.
Right, I'll take less than that. Renee H. White, Metta Common Street. Um, I just wanted to comment on the fact that I do think this is good, the conversations that we're having and I do think that, um, a lot of voices need to be heard and Park and Rec is definitely one of them. And, um, aside from it being a park and rec building or a community center, whatever we wanna call it, whatever it will become, I do think that Park and Rec needs to have, um, a plan or at least an ideal of what they would want. I have heard in conversations in other town meetings, other board meetings, that, um, Park and Rec has stated that the council on aging area is a little far out. I just wanna say that because I heard it the other day in, in a meeting. And so I don't really know what that means. This is again, speculation, but perhaps those areas aren't really the best areas in general. Maybe, and I know we don't have another property in our heads yet, but maybe that zone is not the best zone. If we can pick a better zone in a discussion, maybe we can find something. I don't know. But I'm just saying, that may not even be the ideal area that Park and Rec would want.
They seem to wanna be able to walk their campers in the summer to the swim pond.
Yeah, so I mean, just to throw that out, that's out there, you know, we really have to be open, I think, and, and have a lot of discussion about what should happen.
And what time it changes, cause in two thousand five, six, seven, eight, it was McCarthy Park, McCarthy Park, that's where we wanted. We've got baseball there, we've got lacrosse there, we have soccer there. So it just depends on which way the wind's blowing. I mean, I get that, that for two and a half months out of the year, it's easy to walk to camp, but then the rest of the time, you're not walking to camp.
Right, so I, I think it's, it's definitely good that we're talking about it all.
Hey, one, one point, just to respond to your comment too, is that part of that has to do with what is Parks and Rec. The campers that walk to Hinkley are little kids. The path center primarily is little kids. But when the last school project was up, there was two-point-four million dollars being carried for an oversized gym because fifth-grade travel team parents didn't wanna have to bring their kids outside of town to get to practices. So there's also a constituency issue here around who are we actually serving? I think by default right now, Parks and Rec in the past, up till now, has largely been a program for younger kids. There's some older kid stuff, but not really where they were trying to get, I think, with the basketball courts and things like that. So, uh, that's a, that's part of that whole thing. Thanks, thanks for coming. Okay, all right. Hey Jeff, before you, if you're leaving, I mean, I've gotta spare some, two things. There's your book, good book. I didn't think it ma, I don't think it backed your case, but are you wearing that magazine?
I have seen this magazine, I don't subscribe to it.
You can take that one if you want, yeah. You can, just, you know, just borrow, keep it. But, um, what I like about that, that was in the book, was that that also is a, a magazine that talks about the economic side. It's really geared for people who have woodlots up in northern New England, but there's a lot of nature stuff in there, there's a lot of environmental stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Item three of, of sixteen, not counting consent.
Put me a dollar.
Agenda. These are gonna go fast for any of you that just wanna check off another meeting that you've endured of this, like, word. Uh, vote to, uh, item four, sorry. Uh, vote to reduce the quorum to one-hundred-and-fifty for the annual town meeting in accordance with section two of the Acts of twenty-twenty-five. This would be for our Monday meeting. I have a motion if there's no.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Uh, that's good, we approved it. Excellent. Uh, next one is vote to approve the contract with Trendline for data collection, analysis and evaluation as part of regional mass call three-B prevention efforts. My question was, where was attachment A? All it was, was the town contract. It was, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, it didn't explain it unfortunately.
I have Victoria from Medfield Outreach here, if you'd like to ask her some questions.
Okay. Hi, Victoria.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Perfect. Um, sorry about the attachment A missing. My apologies, I was not aware of that, but I will make sure that is sent over right after this meeting for you. Um, so basically as part of our work with Medfield Outreach and the Medfield Cares About Prevention, or MCAP Coalition, um, we do regional work with five other towns, including Medway, um, Wayland, Hawkington, Holliston, and then Medfield. Um, and that's on a mass call three-B grant. So we do regional substances prevention work. We try to make it all of the same, um, and do the same kind of initiatives and work to enact change. Um, so what this contract is looking at, is looking at data collection, analysis and evaluation. So Trendline is a company that would come in and do some of that work for us and that money is all already allocated. You've already voted on a contract with Hawkington. So Hawkington is the main fiscal agent, um, and they handle all of the grant work. Um, we have just under ten thousand dollars that is budgeted for that. Um, and it's, it's already, like I said, you already approved that contract, um, I believe last year. And so again, back to what this Trendline work is doing, it's just data collection. So, um, once I give you attachment A, it would have all of this in it. We're looking at doing just some focus groups, um, and having them, um, kind of analyze and do some data visualization with data that we already have. So that includes the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, um, which the schools use. And, uh, other, other, um, towns in this grant have worked with Trendline as well. So we're kinda just following suit to try to make sure that we're all on the same page. Sorry, that was a long-winded kind of explanation, but feel, feel free to ask any questions and.
Are you saying we are already in this partnership and this is just a contract to expand it to this data collection?
Correct, correct.
So we've already approved this contract before?
Already approved, um, us being a part of this mass call grant.
How long, how long have we done that?
This, we're in year two, so we've done that two years now.
We did it last year?
Yep.
And this is an expansion or this is this year's extension of the contract?
It's just an expansion for us to be able to bring in kind of this third-party, uh, data evaluation person. Um, it, there's no change to the original contract. It's just, um, kind of allowing us to use these allocated funds that you've already approved, um, from Hawkington to pay this, um, data company.
And the dollar value of this contract is just under ten K?
The contract is ten K, yes, and then we would be paying, um, almost eight thousand dollars to this Trendline company to do all of this data collection. Um, and, and that's an attachment A. Again, my apologies, but I'll make sure that you have that as well.
So my question is, do we need to defer approval or have you heard enough that you're willing to go ahead and approve it?
I'm good with approving it.
I thought you'd be.
Victoria, is there, is there a time factor on this? Do you need this sooner than later?
Um, the fiscal, so our, our fiscal year ends in, at the end of June. Um, so we would just have to have these funds spent by then. Um, but Hawkington is the lead agent for these funds. They are asking for them sooner rather than later. But, um, if you would like to defer, that's, that's totally fine as well.
You can do it on town meeting, you're, you're gonna meet, you're gonna meet at six o'clock.
Why don't you get us the material? We, we actually have a meeting before town meeting next, it's actually.
Less than a week away.
Yeah, less than a week away. Uh, so we'll, we'll look at that. It sounds, it sounds like it's routine, but.
Yeah.
Uh, discipline standpoint, we kinda like to see the contracts were approved.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Victoria.
Next, we have a vote to approve the rent increases for Medfield, Aura, Hillside Meadows Affordable Unit, Units. Med, Medfield Aura, Hillside Meadows Affordable Units, three different areas.
And these are the annual requests from the Cashman Company, um, who you've talked to David before. These are the annuals and you have asked that they not present any increases that are greater than five percent.
Yep.
And Maria had.
And I couldn't tell from the materials what the increases were.
Maria has reviewed, reviewed all of them and they're all at the five percent mark.
Okay, so they maxed out?
Yeah.
And that, and that keeps them below, I think, if I did read the spreadsheets, they, the part I didn't know is how much they'd increase. So if they stayed within the five percent, that's okay. But if I read the spreadsheets right, they also are still below the maximum that the state would allow for an affordable unit.
That is correct.
I think that's true for all three of them, right?
Yes.
Okay. Comments?
No, as long as, my concern was that they stay within the five.
Right. Pete?
I'm fine with this as long as Christine's fine with it, so.
And I'm, as long as they stay within the five.
This has been our, been our policy.
And as long as they're, they're actually still under the state, what the state would allow for affordable units. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
I've moved to approve the rent increases for Medfield, Aura, Hillside Meadows Affordable Units.
Is there a comment?
We have one comment.
Now, are these developers allowed to not assess any increase to the, quote, retail customers? Like, can they just increase the forty-B residence and not increase the rest of the residents?
They, the rest of the residents are paying market, so I don't know what their.
We have no control over the market issue.
So if they can, if they don't increase the market residence and they keep doing the five percent, so isn't the potential for the five, for the forty-B units to almost equal?
Doesn't work that way.
No, cause there's, there's a maximum amount that you are allowed to charge under the state and those market rates aren't, are way above what that is.
Because I do know that.
So the state, what happens, the state sets what that max can be. During COVID, we basically held the, the units to zero increase for COVID. So they fell behind because the state kept adjusting for median income. Uh, last year they came, they wanted to increase some and they, they, I can think of one unit in particular. I don't think it was at, it might have been at Aura, that the actual, the managers had, they had a ninety-three-year-old.
I think it was Aura.
And they just kept hers.
Oh, that was Bob Borelli. That was Bob Borelli on North Street. North Street.
Yeah, and, and that's where it was. And it was like, so if we have, if we have landlords that are doing things like that, I'm not inclined to sit there and put, you know, punish them for this. They're still below the state's max. The, they can't hit the market rate unless the markets collapse, in which case, these are gonna come down anyway. But I don't think they would collapse so far that this would, you know.
They'll max out the market rate or whatever that will be.
Right. All right, we had a motion to approve.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, next, approve, uh, vote for the chair to sign and authorize the acting fire chief. Wait a minute.
Is he still acting or is he official?
Vote.
He is still acting.
Vote for the chair to sign and authorize the acting fire chief to sign the mutual aid agreement for Norfolk County Control for Joint Fire Rescue and/or Ambulance Services.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next is vote to approve and sign the change order for OpenGov to add data migration for the Building Department for eighteen thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-five. And I said, okay, but what does, oh, I was just. but what does, oh, I was just curious. On the, on the paperwork, there's one place on their quote that says prepaid. And I wanted to know what prepaid means. Do we give them that lump sum upfront and then they do the work?
Yes.
That's how it works?
Yep.
So we're.
This is on the, on the state bid list.
Buying a product, but we're buying a service, but we're paying for the service totally upfront?
Totally upfront. And the state contract for this, we had to pay for the entire software project upfront before we even launched it.
So it's a state contract?
It's a state contract, yeah. And I have to, Frank, Brittany and Maria have been working on it, but Brittany and Maria have been sitting down every day and determined that the change in the scope of work would make this project so much better, not only for the customers using it, but for the employees as well. So we wish we had identified it at the beginning, but I think this will make it a much more useful product.
Chris, could either you or Frank just summarize for the residents what this is?
So OpenGov is, it will be our new permitting software. So right now we have, if you file for a building permit, you can do that online. This is an updated software that will provide a much more robust opportunity for our residents. But what it does on the backend for all of us is it flags a workflow. So right now, if you file for a building permit, that building permit is physically walked around the building to make sure every department has signed off. There is always the chance when you're doing that, you're going to miss it. This setup, sets up electronic workflows that if, for example, Susan Cronin does not sign off, that there's no liens on the property, it cannot advance to the next spot. So there won't be any things, you know, I would like not to say all of them, but we are hoping that none of those things will fall through the cracks again. It also integrates with our new GIS system. So when you click on the parcel map, you will have a window pop up and you can access everything that's ever been done on that property. All the building permit records, if it was part of a planning board decision, ZBA decision, all of that. So we're getting there. We appreciate everybody's patience. This is way more work than we ever anticipated.
Sounds like Carfax for buildings.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Did you move?
I think I did.
I think you did.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, vote to sign the contract with JM Corporation for the reconstruction of the Metacomet Tennis Courts pending town meeting approval. The value is two hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars, which was stated as coming in under what the expected cost was going to be. The period of performance, I think contract gets awarded on the fifth of May, but the tennis courts should be, project should be completed by the twenty-sixth of September. For those tennis players out there that were wondering whether you would be able to use these tennis courts for fall tennis, it appears the answer is yes, after the twenty-sixth of September.
So moved.
Yeah, well, originally it was laid out to the fifteenth of November or something like that and Ben pushed them in, so.
So moved.
So moved.
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That one carries. Okay. Next, vote to sign the contract with Almar LLC for partial siding replacement at the Dwight Derby House for $10,000 as part of the earmark money received from the FY twenty-five operating budget. This work is to be completed by May thirtieth, twenty-five. So they, it's about a one-month cycle here.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That one's approved. Next, vote to sign the Estoppel Certificate, which acknowledges the transfer of ownership of the solar asset on Thomas Blake Middle School to Select Energy LLC. So I learned the last time we had to sign an Estoppel certificate, what Estoppel means. And as far as I can tell, what it really says is we've had an interest, this, this particular company that's doing this, we've had an interest with their relationship with them and we're basically saying they don't owe us any money that you don't know about. We don't have anything that we're planning to do that would change the circumstances. So as they change ownership to someone, that owner knows that there's no skeletons lurking in the closet. That, that the town of Medfield is going to spring on them after they take on ownership. Is that the non-illegal explanation?
Better explanation than I could have given.
All right.
Is this the same group that took ownership of, was it the highway?
Select has multiple alter egos.
The only question I had on the paperwork is it referred to company, to attachment C, which is the force majeure incidence? So I went looking for attachment C and there is no attachment C, but the wording is kind of like attachment C contains the force majeure incidence. And I'm assuming it's a negative report because there is no attachment C in the document. Okay.
Shouldn't be anything.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So my, my comment on this one is that when, when you look at the overhead roofs, overhead photos of the roof, that very little of the roofs are actually being covered with solar panels. So I think we have a lot of expansion opportunity. I don't know.
Once we spend the nineteen million dollars to replace the roofs, yeah, yeah.
Next, vote to approve a request for a one-day liquor license for a fundraising event at the Dwight Derby House for child programs at beginning years on May second from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And all will note that its Seventh Way Brewing, I believe, was on the, on the application. So I suppose they're in good hands.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Finally, consent agenda. I got a bunch of items here. One, vote to sign the proclamation for Matthew Johnson Jr. for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Next, vote to accept the sign request for the gazebo players of Medfield promoting Richard III at North and Route 109 from July seventh through July twentieth. Oh, this is, I keep, I did the same thing when I read that on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought they were holding the play at the intersection, yeah.
That's really going to screw stuff up, but it's the sign. Yeah, yeah.
I read it the same way.
Number, number three.
Everybody's going to be on the sidewalks, I hope.
It would certainly catch. It's called, it's called traffic calming. Next, vote to accept the sign request for Bell Forge announcing the start of their season at the usual locations from April thirtieth through May twelfth.
Okay, there you go. They're going to start their season at the usual locations.
At the usual location. Yes. Next, vote to approve two rain, no, this is modified, right?
Yeah, we're doing just Vine Lake Cemetery. Yep.
Vote to approve the rain date of Saturday, May third, for the Richard De Sorger Vine Lake Cemetery walking tours. First tour at 9:00 AM and last tour at 1:30 PM.
Vote B, we can X out.
Yep, B is no longer necessary.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, B got Xed out. Let me do that again. Can I get a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And that was with B dropped off. Okay. Well, that's approved. Next, we have no meeting minutes. Town Administrator update.
Just a few things. Just a reminder, town meeting next Monday, seven o'clock. Hope to see you all there. We are actively seeking members of the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. Mike Weber announced this week his resignation from the Permanent Planning and Building Committee as well as the School Building Committee. So I know, we're very sad to see Mike go, but happy for him moving on to this next phase. But we do need two members from the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. So if anybody's interested, please reach out to Brittany or myself. I want to congratulate Frank on signing his contract with the town of Holliston. He will begin as, he will begin as the town manager on June second for Holliston. And I am pleased to announce that Brittany Franklin will be the next Assistant Town Administrator for Medfield.
Out of the frying pan into the fire for both of them.
Can't hide from two waters there.
All right, that's it?
That's all I have tonight.
No other turmoil in the staffing of the town departments. That's good. Next meeting dates, May fifth, the town meeting already covered. Next regular select board meeting will be May thirteenth, followed a week later with a meeting on May twentieth, followed, next meeting, June third, followed by the June seventeenth meeting, July first, July fifteenth. Whatever happened to those one meeting a month?
I know, I said the same thing.
So we're, we're holding as a placeholder July fifteenth, depending on what our, what our projects we want to get accomplished this year. Right now, I'm holding you to July first.
And August twelfth is the only alleged date in the month of August.
That is the only one.
Okay.
Just like tonight was supposed to be one agenda item.
Yeah, well, it's not nine o'clock yet. We're good. Let's see. Select Board member reports.
All right. So pretty busy two weeks here. Since I last saw you, I've been to two wayfinding meetings. We've got some feedback from our wayfinding group that we're working with. They've had a chance to interview the various folks that we recommended they talk to. Then we had a chance this past Friday to kind of review what was shared with us in terms of ideas for signage, making sure we're capturing the right locations in town, respecting the boundaries that the contract that we signed off for, for $35,000 is, is addressing. And then we're going to hold a forum probably in late June so that the public can come in and kind of hear what we're been hearing and throwing around some ideas. And the reason we have to do it in June is the money actually needs to be committed by December. And we know there's a few things that need to take place. So as much as I would have liked to push that meeting, let's say to September, so people who may want to go away for the summer or whatever, it wouldn't leave enough time for us to act on the, on the money. So we'll get it in in June. Went to the Council on Aging Volunteer Recognition Dinner last Wednesday night, really nice event. Loved the ladies I sat with for dinner, really good conversation, just a nice night in general. I meant to bring the placemat that had all the, all the things that they've done was wildly impressive. Shoot, another time I'll read off those, but Sarah did a nice job with that. I went to the Medfield Foundation Pitchet Event a week ago tomorrow. Again, another nice event, listening to the different groups get up and pitch and request grant money. Super informative night, great groups that came forward. Went to the Historical Weekend Kickoff at the Dwight Derby House. It was a nice turnout there. As I mentioned a little while ago, I had a chance to meet with the young man who's a student at Severian, who came and just asked me some questions pertaining to building of the Park and Rec Center. It was, it was a quick interview, nicely done, nice young man. And then I sat in the meeting last night that the planning folks, or the ZBA maybe, ZBA held for eighty-sixth Plain Street, just to hear the dialogue that's going on from the neighbors' perspective, from the developers' perspective. Really interesting conversation. And a lot of it came down to, a lot of conversation was about the safety between the sign of, the light, the sight line from departing out of that driveway to looking left and looking right and knowing that there's a deep pitch. But really good conversation, nothing I'd agree to, just a good, good conversation shared. I had a chance to sit in the Concom meeting a week or so ago where they voted to approve the Montrose turf to go forward with, with conditions. So I think everyone was happy to achieve that. And then in the Pitchet Event, there was a Pitchet project that came up that referenced the three seventy-five celebration. So this is kind of a public service notice. Anyone who's thinking of trying to acknowledge the three seventy-five, the only thing I do want to put out there is that Marion is leading a committee. Now, I know right now she's swamped and everything she's doing is focused on the annual town meeting. And when she gets that behind her, she said that they'll regroup and start looking and talking about ideas they have for three seventy-five. But any group or organization should reach out to Marion so that there's no surprises, there's no conflict. And I'll give you a for example, the wayfinding group, we were talking about banners and how we might use things going down, down on Main Street, and then acknowledged that, you know, the, the three fiftieth, there were banners that were put up throughout town. So we want to make sure that whatever we may choose to do in wayfinding that would start getting installed in 2026 doesn't conflict or trip over anything that Marion might be doing to recognize three seventy-five. And I, I know it's not going to happen, but it was like, ooh, that's a good, I got you. And we gave the same suggestion to someone from the Pitchet Event, that if they're looking to do anything, it's going to do, have anything to do with the historical significance, to reach out to Marion. And other than that, oh, one comment that I got from a resident, because I live close to the tennis courts at the high school, and I guess I should throw this by Ben, is that the tennis courts have been treated, and I think they're getting ready to put the, the last coat on, but it has like puddles with the rain we've had. And I'm assuming that, that the, the group who's going to do the last coat, it will be flat. Like right now, it's not flat.
I would assume so, but we'll, we'll put a note into Ben to take a look.
Which, which, the ones behind the public safety building?
No, at the high school.
The two tennis courts right at the high school, right next to the basketball.
Oh, oh, oh.
Like it's kind, and I've had a couple of people make the comment to be like, how come this puddle? It's like, isn't that supposed to be flat if you're playing tennis? So I'm going, assumption that they, when they, before they do the final, final coat, that there's something they're going to do to make sure that it's a flat surface and you're not seeing the little gullies. And then I'll throw one more little nugget out there, because I was walking the track last weekend. Does this go to Ben? Like the, our high school track costs a lot of money when they redid it, I don't know how many years ago. And right now, ninety percent of that track is in really good shape. But if you go, if you're looking at the football field so that the scoreboard is to your right, on the left-hand side where you go walk around the bend, there's some sections that are just starting to crack. And it's like watching a crack on a sidewalk. If you catch it early, it's a simple fix. Catch it later, it's a huge gap. Like the tennis courts at the high school, it's a massive redo. So I'm curious if the.
I would send that to Michael.
Oh, to Michael and not Ben? Okay.
Yeah, go to Michael.
Yeah. Because there's, there's like, after, after walking, I won't tell you how many miles, I was checking the track out and I'm like, all right, it's only two little areas that have caught now, it's not a significant expense. But what tends to happen, and this is another comment a resident made to me this morning in front of my house, is that we get ourselves in these pickles where we don't respond to things, that it costs us a boatload of money. So if we can try to, you know, get feedback from residents of seeing something at the start of something that can be repaired. So I mean, if they had to cut out a section of that track and just repair the two cracks, be significantly less expensive than having to do the whole track in three, four, or five years. So on that note, we'll pass it to Pete.
Pete?
So I had a conversation with some neighboring road neighbors who had surveyors in their backyard to figure out, help them figure out what was going on. I too went to the Medfield Foundation Legacy Funds Pitchet Event and heard some excellent pitches. I then went the following week to the Medfield Foundation Legacy Funds Grant Awards Night. And I'm happy to tell you all that the Zulu was awarded $10,000 for a consultant, the animal shelter, $10,000 for renovations that they're doing. Peak House awarded $10,000 for a, they're trying to figure out what the structure of the Peak House is underneath the sheathing on the inside and the, and the shingles on the outside. They're going to reshingle, so they're, they're going to use the money to, to make a record of what the actual structure is. They, I just realized several years ago that they didn't know what the structure was in there. They called, Rob Gregg called it a disaster plan, so that if it burns down, they know what's, what it really is, because at the moment they don't. Sustainable, Medfield got $2,800 to do a welcome handbook. And the Friends of the Medfield High School Theater got $4,000 to do tools and a shed to keep them in. Council on Aging had that celebration of volunteers dinner that Eileen was mentioning. This was the, the placemat that they had at every place and it was a list of different things. But I'll just tell you the, the highlights. Six thousand meals were delivered to people in town, four hundred and sixteen trips to locations to pick up the day-old products to give out to the seniors. And to summarize, they say in 2024, seventy volunteers completed, five thousand six hundred forty-two hours of volunteer work, saving the town $84,000. Went to the History Weekend Kickoff Event, which was a Friday, last Friday night at the Dwight Derby House. The next Sunday, I got to judge the Ferry House Competition with Marjorie Capucci, the branch manager from Needham Bank. Had a, just a very interesting lunch today with Bob Lutman, longtime Medfield resident, Bob Lutman and Mary Finley. And so it was just nice to hear, catch up with them. And that's it.
Can you move out of town?
Pardon?
Can you move out of town?
Yeah. Couple times.
Close early. I got two things. One, I also went to the volunteer appreciation dinner. Had a nice catered by Basil, so reliably good food for sure. And it was great. The table I was at had some great conversation with some, people have pretty good sense of humor. So that was an enjoyable, enjoyable dinner. I was, I was contrasting it with what we did last year. And I wasn't sure, I'm, I'm curious, I wasn't sure if as many volunteers, I couldn't really tell. There are some people that are definitely volunteers that were there, but there were some people that I thought I'd seen at Zulu that I didn't, I wasn't quite sure if it was the same group. And then the other thing I wasn't sure about, I know when we did the thing at Zulu, I think that people who were considering becoming volunteers were invited.
Yes.
And I wasn't sure if that was the case this year or not.
Is this more for Council on Aging volunteers?
This was, that was Council on Aging volunteers.
So this is not the same?
No, no, no. No, no, no. That was, that was specifically the volunteers for the Council on Aging.
Well, that would explain why the audience was a little different. I didn't make the differentiation. I was like, oh, you're doing it at the COA.
Well, that was just those who volunteer at the Council on Aging. Yes. No, we received.
There we go. That's, those were the people that were there. There we go, that's, those were the people that were there.
We are in the planning process of our next townwide volunteer event for all of our boards and committees. We received a lot of feedback after the last one about how we could work to improve that, so.
Okay.
We're taking those suggestions under advisement.
See, I totally missed the subtlety in what's going on in the town here. I just thought of the same thing and, uh, it was, anyway, it was a nice, it was a good night.
It was a great event.
It was just, I guess my powers of observation are okay, it's just my understanding that's deficient, okay. Uh, and then the other thing, uh, back on the 23rd on Wed, uh, I'm sorry, on, uh, Wednesday, the 16th, so a couple of weeks ago, that was the Norfolk County Advisory Board meeting. Uh, good meeting. The more time I spend with those guys, the more I sort of gain an understanding of. This county is, I think for most people, are just this sort of amorphous mythical entity that nobody really knows what they do and they're thankful when they stay out of our way. Uh, but they actually do a lot of stuff. And one of the things that surprised me, we were review, we were doing the initial review of their FY '26 budget. And one thing I was, without getting into all the details of it, I haven't done that yet, but their budget, which is a good-sized budget, is only increasing, I think, $22,000 for FY '26. It was their, their, uh, you know, their being austere in, in terms of what they're doing, which I kind of want to dig into it and say, how did you manage to pull that off? Because they have things like the healthcare increases and things like that, but they, uh, you know, they were just looking at the long-term projections. So this John, this is a guy who's doing a good job on the county level, keeping, uh, keeping the boat from tipping over, the fiscal boat. So, uh, I have to figure out more on that than, uh, you may have a tough time getting any. This is true, but, uh, I was just surprised to see this.
You may or may not be a Holliston resident, so I'll let you in on the inside joke.
So anyway, I was, I, it was sort of a remarkable feat, given the size of the budget. The county budget's not super huge.
It's not very big.
So that's it.
Excellent.
Excellent.
All right.
We did it.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And special recognition to those who stuck it out all the way to the end of this.